Thank you and good evening everyone. I would like to take this opportunity to welcome both returning members and the new intake of councillors. My office will be open to any of you if you want to come in for a cup of tea or coffee. And very, very likely if you come in, there'll be cakes. Best if you can know to make an appointment through my secretary Ashley, but the door will always be open. So just to let you know that, okay, down to business. Roger.
Thank you, Lord Provost. Welcome to this meeting of Dundee City Council, which is being held remotely in terms of section forty-three of the Local Governance in Scotland Act two thousand and three. All members in attendance are able to fully participate in the meeting, which is being recorded. Should any member need to leave the meeting for any reason, can they please use the chat to advise of this? If a member loses their connection, they should make every effort to rejoin the meeting. But if this is not possible, the committee services officer will note their absence for the remainder of the meeting. If you have to leave the meeting due to a declaration of interest, you must remain out of the meeting until invited back in. Would all members please mute their microphones when not speaking to avoid background noise and turn off any smart speakers? Please start the meeting with your camera on. Your face will appear on the screen when you're speaking. If your connection is poor, you may wish to turn off your camera and see if this improves matters. If this doesn't help, you may wish to quickly leave the meeting and rejoin. If you wish to raise a point of order, ask a question, speak on any item or move a motion or amendment, please use the chat when the relevant item is called. The chair will then invite you to speak. Would members of the press and public please not post messages in the chat? Where items are for noting or where there has been no disagreement expressed, the chair will call for any member who has a contrary view to indicate this through the chat. Otherwise, the item will be agreed. Please would members not use the chat for any other purposes as those joining the meeting by telephone cannot see the chat and therefore will not be able to follow the debate. Although we are operating in a different way, this is still a formal meeting of the council and requires standards of behaviour and discussion are the same as in a face-to-face meeting. Standing orders will apply to the proceedings and the terms of the councillor's code of conduct will also apply in the normal way. Does any member have any queries regarding this procedure? There are no queries, Lord Provost, so I will now ask the committee services officer to take a roll call for the minute. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I would do ask members to confirm their present when I call their name. Lord Provost.
Present.
Thank you, councillor Alexander.
I am here.
Councillor Anderson.
Present.
Deputy Lord Provost Cardell.
Present.
Councillor Dawson.
I'm here.
Councillor Ilnacla.
Here.
Councillor Flynn.
Good evening, present.
Councillor Hunter.
Present.
Councillor Lynn.
Present.
Bailey Roberts.
Good evening, I'm here.
Councillor Rome.
Good evening, present.
Bailey Sors.
Yes, I'm here.
Councillor Short.
Here.
Thank you. Councillor Smith.
I'm here.
Councillor Troland.
Yeah.
Bailey Keenan.
Present.
Councillor Crookshank.
Present.
Councillor Finnegan.
Present.
Councillor McHugh.
Present.
Councillor McCarvin.
Present.
Councillor Malone.
I'm here.
Councillor Scullen.
Present.
Councillor Shears.
Present.
Bailey Wright. Bailey Wright.
She's on holiday.
Thank you very much. We're back from his absence. Bailey McPherson.
Good evening, present.
Councillor Coleman.
Good evening, present.
Councillor Creighton.
Present.
Councillor Duncan.
Here.
Bailey Scott.
Here.
Thank you very much. That concludes the roll call.
Thank you, Mr Wardle. Lord Provost, members of the council, there is one item of business this evening, the minutes for information and record purposes.
Is this agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Provost. That concludes the business of the city council.
Could I just say, Mr Many, Lord Provost, I actually did say comment, please, if that's okay. Just for the record, there is an error on page twenty-four in relation to deputy convenor of scrutiny committee, which the officers half accepted is incorrect. I think it's a cut and paste from two thousand and seventeen as I was the sole nominee. And I should say, Lord Provost, mine's a chocolate clear when I come to visit, if that's okay. Thank you.
That will be waiting for you, Bailey McPherson. Just make an appointment.
Very kind. Thank you.
Roger.
Thank you, Lord Provost. Thank you, Bailey McPherson. That concludes the business of the city council. The next committee is the Community Safety and Public Protection Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Good evening and welcome to the Community Safety and Public Protection. I think it's Veronica that's going to take us through the order of the business.
It is. Item one, declarations of interest. Are there any declarations?
Veronica, I have one, but it's for the policing report, which is item number three. And my granddaughter is actually a member of the youth volunteers for Police Scotland. So it's a non-financial.
Yeah, I've got a note of that. Thank you very much. Are there any further declarations?
No, it looks like there's nobody else putting their hands up.
Okay, we'll move back to the agenda then. Item two, Scottish Fire and Rescue Service quarterly performance report. First of October to thirty-first of December two thousand and twenty-one. This is for your information.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask Scott to take us through this.
Thank you, convenor, and good evening, everyone. Firstly, can I begin by congratulating members on their recent election to office? I am area commander, Scott Gibson, and have recently taken over the local senior officer role for the Perkin Ross, Angus and Dundee area. And I look forward to working with members and partners across the area over the coming months. Before I introduce the report, I would just like to inform members that Scottish Fire and Rescue Service are currently going through a refresh of the strategic plan, which is open for consultation on our website. The closing date for feedback is the tenth of July. And I would encourage members to have their say and influence the future of our service and thank those who have already contributed. If I can now introduce the quarter three report and ask members to scrutinise, question and note the content within. If I can guide you to page eight on your report pack, you will see the performance summary, which I will guide you through prior to handing over to group commander Smart for some more in-depth analysis. First of all, the number of accidental dwelling fires continues to reduce, which is a positive sign, albeit with the recent tragic death of an elderly female from a fire on Hoyt Drive. Just lets us see how easy this can change and how easily someone can succumb to the dangers of fire. During this reporting period of quarter three, there were no fatal fire casualties. And the same report in period non-fatal casualties were reduced, and they are reducing over the longer term. Non-domestic fires remain low in Dundee with no casualties reported. Road traffic collisions are down on previous quarters and reporting well, and the same with road traffic collision fatal casualties. Non-fatal road traffic collision casualties are down for the quarter but are still showing red due to increased numbers from previous reporting periods. A positive sign to see the unwanted fire alarm signals quite low, with the caveat that these figures along with others are recorded during the period whilst we were still in Covid. Therefore, benchmarking can sometimes prove difficult when looking back over that period. And finally, deliberate primary and secondary fires remain an area of focus with the numbers showing high. Excuse me. And we continue to proactively in partnership target deliberate fire setting and fire-related antisocial behaviour. Thank you for listening and I'll now pass you over to group commander Smart to discuss further some of the information that I've just went through.
Thanks very much, Mr Gibson. So yeah, just as he highlighted, I really just wanted to focus in particular on the areas where obviously we have red high-line indicators. So in particular though, headline indicator number nine, so in terms of non-fatal RTC casualties. Yes, they are up in terms of the year-to-date figure. However, encouragingly, because this is obviously Q three report from last year, we have seen a significant drop over Q four period and also going into Q one for this year. And obviously that will be reflected in the subsequent reports that will come out. In terms of deliberate primary fires, so again, yes, we've increased the year-to-date figure unfortunately by Q three there. However, again, in terms of Q four, it dropped by forty-five percent and a further twenty percent going into first quarter for this year. So again, that's quite an encouraging change and it will be interesting to see how that continues. In terms of deliberate secondary fires, again, unfortunately, year-to-date figure there, as you can see, has exceeded what we had hoped would be for the annual target. And Q four, unfortunately, there was a slight increase again on Q three figures there. However, a three percent drop in terms of Q one this year. So again, it is encouraging that is now on the turn on an encouraging note. And the only other area, again, I just wanted to just highlight particularly again, was just page twenty there of your meeting pack. So again, just really focusing there on what we mentioned in terms of our focus in particular just now is deliberate and secondary fires. And in particular with the Community Safety Engagement Programme, so page twenty-two of your meeting pack there, in appendix one. Again, you'll see the various community safety engagement programmes. And to be honest with you, the majority of the focus at the time for Q three last year was in particular on bonfire night itself. There was obviously no formal displays last year and we were still under significant Covid restrictions. So it will be interesting to see how these play out for this year. And so that's really all I really wanted to highlight in the report. So I'd like to offer up any questions to me. Thank you.
Thank you for that. First person we have on the list is councillor McGivern.
Thanks Chair. Just a general comment and a question, if you will. I'd spoke to Scott Gibson earlier this afternoon with regards to the time periods that are under scrutiny this evening for both Scottish Fire and Rescue and Police Scotland as well. And Scott had given me comment yet earlier on today, but it would be, it would be good to hear it again today, this evening. We are looking at outdated statistics. I've heard Graham mention Q four. There's been drops, but we're not really sure what kind of impact that's had. We've not had any numbers to go round what that statement. So I think for me and others, no doubt, it would be worthwhile knowing we're looking at statistics that end thirty-first of December last year. We're into June now. So a comment with regards to why we're looking at two-degree outdated information would be welcome. Considering that you look at item three, antisocial behaviour, we've got information up to March twenty-two. And I think it would be helpful if both Scottish Fire and Rescue and Police Scotland were able to provide similar.
We should have had a meeting before the election. So that's maybe why the statistics are so far out. But would one of fire and rescue like to come back on this one?
Yeah, so as councillor McGivern says, I was in a meeting earlier and we had a discussion around this. So my understanding is that it was due to the local elections that the scrutiny and audit was put on hold due to that. And my further understanding is that the catch-up meetings are in the diary and are programmed then in quite quick succession. I haven't been sent out the dates as of yet. Group commander Smart may have the dates for that going forward.
And yeah, thanks, Mr Gibson. The other thing that I'd like to add, and thanks for your question, Mr McGivern. But to be honest with you, this is something that we have discussed jointly with our partners in the police and obviously for the next report, they may want to comment. I know that there have been some significant challenges with getting some national statistics. And again, with some systems that are currently being upgraded. However, the only thing that I may want to offer and that can be discussed with the convenor is that there may be an opportunity to combine Q four and Q one report. It might be an option and that could bring us back on track. But again, that's something that we would need to obviously discuss.
George, you want to come back in?
Yeah, thanks Chair. Yeah, I'm happy to hear that. It would be great to play that, get catch-up with accurate figures as such. A question for Mr Smart. You touched on page fifteen, the non-fatal road traffic casualties. Can I ask what partnership working with the council offices are currently in place to lessen these casualties? Because you did mention as well that the increase seem to have stopped over quarter four in the quarter one of the new financial year. So I'd be interested to hear what partnership working is currently taking place.
Thanks councillor McGivern. I can take that question. So we've now become involved in the new driver scheme along with our partners in Police Scotland, who are leading on this scheme. And it's aimed at sixteen to twenty-four-year-olds. And it's using some different types of technology like virtual reality and videos. And then going through the videos and pausing for questions, et cetera, as we go through it. So this is, this is looking to replace the previous safe drive, stay alive that you may be aware or may have been along to that we used to do. We've currently got our community action team that are trained in this. And we're going to be starting to identify contacts for that. And as I say, involved with police and other colleagues in colleges, schools, modern apprenticeship schemes and trying to target those areas in the new driver scheme. That answer your question?
Yeah, Chair, just a quick supplementary, please. So I take it by mentioning sixteen to twenty-four-year-olds by attending colleges, you have an age profile of offenders and victims as well?
Yes, councillor. So I'll let Police Scotland when they come onto the report to maybe comment further on that. But it is Police Scotland-led and we've just come into it. But yeah, it's based on the highest risk area that's been provided through previous statistics and evidence of sixteen to twenty-four-year-olds.
Thank you.
Bailey Keenan. Kevin, have you got a question?
Yeah, just to follow on from councillor McGivern's question. What date do we think will bring the data up to date? What month will we be reporting next thing we see information for sort of police and fire? Because if it's December last year and we're six months out of date, you know, how close to how close to the current situation that we're going to be receiving? And I think, you know, if we're, if we're to be making any request to Police Scotland, we'd better have a real indication of where the pressure points are and the sort of things that they're dealing with at the moment. If we were to make any recommendations through the scrutiny process, so it'd be useful to know what we're likely to catch up on by what date, you know.
Convenor, if I could just jump in here, in terms of statistics and analysis from a Scottish Fire and Rescue Service perspective, we are in a position to provide Q four and also Q one now, Mr Keenan. So like I said, that's not necessarily a massive problem for us. And again, it would need to be a discussion. Like I said, we're going to combine the two reports at the next meeting, which would bring us back on track. But again, we'd need to refer to our colleagues in Police Scotland to see if that would be a possibility for them as well.
So does it work sort of a financial year as opposed to a calendar year? What is Q one and Q four combined take with two? What month would that take with two? Or is this December Q four?
Yeah, sorry. So Q four would be January to the thirty-first of March, first of January to the thirty-first of March. And Q one will be the first of April to the thirtieth of June. So.
That would be extremely useful then.
The chief exec would like to come in. Greg?
Yeah, thanks convenor. So just in response to Bailey Keenan and councillor McGivern's question, I'll take a note from this meeting to speak to the executive director of neighbourhood services, Police Scotland and also fire to ensure that reports that come forward to the next community safety and public protection meeting have the most up-to-date information as possible, convenor. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? And we agree to note this report? I'm seeing heads nodding, so I'll say yes. Thank you. Veronica, do you want to take us to the next one?
Okay, item number three, it's Dundee local policing area quarterly police report, first of October to thirty-first of December two thousand and twenty-one. This report is for your information.
Thank you. Could the chief superintendent please take us through this report?
Yes, thanks convenor. Good afternoon, everybody. It's great to see you all. And I would equally to my fire service colleagues, offer my congratulations on the recent appointments to office. For information today, I'm joined by Chief Inspector Ross Fitzgerald, who is the local area commander for Dundee. And in terms of the policing report, I trust that members have had both an opportunity to read the report. And on this, I certainly wouldn't intend to go over the full detail of the submission. It clearly contains quite a bit of significant data and contextual information. The report covers the reporting period quarter three, which, subject to previous discussion there, the policing positioning in terms of submission is the same as described by fire service colleagues. It does cover the period first of October to thirty-first of December. However, focuses for the full year data from the first of April twenty-one until the thirty-first of September, of December, sorry, twenty-one. As per the previous quarter that we reported on to members of this committee, the impact of the coronavirus pandemic continues certainly to make year-on-year comparisons really quite challenging due to the varying levels of restrictions that have been in place at the different times. And certainly for quarter three, which is being presented today, we had a return to some of the restrictions in December in relation to the Omicron variant, which I'm sure members will be aware of. So this period also that is being reported today coincides with the demands of COP twenty-six, which took place throughout the reporting quarter and the multi-agency responses, not only to bonfire night as described by fire service colleagues, but also multi-agency responses to Storm Arwen. In the most part, however, the quarter did see policing responses that were much more aligned to pre-pandemic policing demands with increased roads usage, increased social interaction and the reopened licensed trade and wider commercial and local events leading to increased associated offences. In terms of a brief summary of what is detailed in this quarter's performance report, I'll pass on to Chief Inspector Fitzgerald, who will draw out some of the key points for you. And then we will, we will both be clearly happy to take any questions. And thank you very much.
Good evening convenor and committee members. Just to touch on the highlights of the report then. So I'd like to kind of touch on violence first. So looking across the end of Q three statistics, a positive position in terms of serious violence across the city with reductions in occurrence rates seen across serious assaults, robberies and our common assaults, so reductions in all three areas. The only area that bucks that trend is assaults of emergency workers, which has seen a kind of almost eight percent increase by the end of Q three last year. And that area is kind of subject to a national focus through the chief constable's, your safety matters kind of programme with a variety of kind of strands beneath that, looking to try and reduce the numbers of assaults on ourselves and other emergency colleagues. And locally, some aspects of that relate to the rollout of Taser-trained officers and also a specific focus on Bell Street custody centre, where we see large numbers of assaults of emergency workers occurring. So that's the kind of the work that's ongoing in terms of that area. Across the statistics, we continue to see approximately twenty-five percent of crimes of violence are linked to domestic abuse within the city. And the other common trends that we see across crimes of violence are the involvement of alcohol and drugs, both on behalf of the victims and the perpetrators, which are present in a high number of those crimes. And also a significant number of crimes where the perpetrators and the victims are known to each other before the crime has occurred. Again, looking at kind of age ranges, the highest percentage of individuals who are involved in the perpetrating violent crime remain in that kind of bracket of young males. So males between the ages of eighteen to kind of late to mid twenties. And likewise, the victim profile is similar in terms of the victims being also within that age and kind of gender category. Moving on to road safety, again, some very positive returns in terms of road safety statistics across the city come the end of Q three last year. And with no fatal road traffic collisions seen within the city during the performance year. A twenty-four percent reduction in serious injury road traffic collisions and a twenty-five percent reduction in slight injury road traffic collisions, which hopefully helps build upon some of the statistics provided by Scottish Fire and Rescue. Again, there are continuing kind of joint agency initiatives which have been touched on, which continue to be delivered across the city. Again, just to touch on the work being done with younger drivers. So we are absolutely focused on some of our more vulnerable user groups. And statistically, younger drivers who have recently passed their tests and are driving in the company of peers tend to be in that kind of category where they are more prone to be involved in collisions, hence the the targeting of that specific piece of work into individuals of that kind of age. Moving on to sexual offences, again, we've seen an overall reduction in sexual offences of just over five percent come the end of Q three. And probably most notably, and the statistic that's reflected in the report, seen a twenty-seven percent drop in the commission of crimes of rape or attempted rape, which is clearly extremely welcome with the detection rates in Dundee above the national average in that area. To finish on some of the challenges we are seeing, clearly into the acquisitive crime area, some significant increases in occurrence rates across a range of offences, including housebreakings, kind of fraud and vehicle crime. Again, a lot of work being done in the preventative space around kind of vehicle security, online safety and kind of a lot of work with our partnerships approach to try and contact the victim of every single fraud, to try and offer that reassurance and support. And continue to see a number of online frauds being perpetrated by individuals out with the UK. And a lot of cyber-enabled offences making these more difficult to detect. But ultimately, a real focus for us going forward in terms of acquisitive crime, which largely we believe has been driven by the kind of social economic factors that are at play nationally across the board. And the increases seen in Dundee are reflected in national statistics. So that's probably the highlights from the report for me. Not touched on every area and I understand you may have a wide variety of questions for myself and chief superintendent. Not touched on every area and I understand you may have a wide variety of questions for myself and chief superintendent Davison. So more than happy to take those now.
We've got a list of people, so we'll start with Bailey McPherson. Fraser, have you got a question?
Yeah, thanks, Convenor. It's really in relation to the last point that was made regarding fraud and some of the, you know, the online activity that's taking place. Clearly, as the report alludes to, detection is, and perhaps maybe unsurprisingly low, given the nature of the crime and some of it obviously really emanating from out with the UK. However, I did notice on page 51, it did indicate that the rate of fraud per 10,000 of the population was significantly higher in Dundee than in Perth and Kinnross and Angus. In other words, the rest of the divisional area. And I'm wondering if that's perhaps an urban versus rural type issue or perhaps police colleagues could indicate if they have any indication as to why that could be the case. And I'm just really wondering, I appreciate the challenges facing Police Scotland in relation to detecting this. And perhaps in a way, effort in relation to trying to reduce it in terms of actively engaging with the community. And it's an education thing, isn't it? About, you know, what do you do with phishing emails and that sort of thing? And I was really wondering if any form of local, as opposed to the sort of national campaigns that take place, but anything that can be done proactively locally to highlight the areas of online fraud and what can be done to, you know, to give good practice, if you like, to the public in relation to, you know, asserting what is real and what is not, if you know what I mean, and what is potentially fraudulent. And I'd just really like the police's feedback on that.
To Bailey McPherson, thank you very much for the questions. Certainly, the per 10,000 point, first of all, and then I'll come on to the second bit. And I'll bring in Chief Inspector Fitzgerald for some of the local activity we're doing very specific to Dundee. But in terms of the rate per 10,000, there is a fairly consistent picture across the country as was described in terms of this growing rate and area of criminality. And it certainly started to emerge through the pandemic, in particular as crime moved into the online space at quite a rate. In terms of the variances between Dundee and Perth and Kinnross, I'll be honest, I'll need to go away and do a more specific bit of analysis around about that. But my initial sort of gut feel on it would be that it would be to do with the urban versus rural difference. But I would want to take that action away and do that bit further analysis just to be firm on what I'm able to say in respect to that. In terms of the more preventative space that you described, so the area of online fraud is extremely complex and it's something that we work with on both a national, international and local level. And that prevention space crosses many spheres. So in the international space, there's the developments around about cybersecurity from major multinational corporations into the UK space. In a similar vein, around about what can be done to actually, you know, prevent occurrences of crime being able to be exploited in the first instance. And whether that be, you know, online exploitation of children or whether it be for financial gain. Working with the banking sector in terms of protocols for early alerts around about vulnerabilities. And again, there are numerous prevention pieces of advice that come out from all of those corporate sectors and public sector agencies at that national and regional level. And our own approach as a national organisation is that development of a cyber strategy in conjunction with national partners, which is going to see, for example, work with the Scottish Business Crime Resilience Centre, because we're not talking about individual frauds. It's into commercial frauds and other things as well. But locally, we do take this issue really seriously. And Chief Inspector Fitzgerald, I'm sure will give some examples. But there's one as recently as a fairly recent weekend where we had some crime prevention stall and advice in the overgate. And also that targeted, you know, leaflet drop in and around about vulnerable communities, work with campaigns that we, that are either national or regional. We would clearly share them on through the various crime prevention formats that we have. I trust that helps. And Chief Inspector Fitzgerald, just for any further local context?
Thank you. So just to pick up on some of that, I suppose, just to give that reassurance that, as I touched on, every victim of fraud in Dundee receives a follow up phone call from one of our crime prevention officers within our partnerships on the back of being a victim of that kind of crime. You tend to find that instigating that conversation is helpful in that a number of victims of fraud are potentially embarrassed or feel stigmatized, don't want to reach out to family members and highlight the fact that they've been a victim, which can often increase their vulnerability to becoming a repeat victim in the future. So those conversations are useful in terms of trying to kind of take away that sense of embarrassment and build a wee kind of a wee bit of support, the family support around that individual to try and prevent further offences occurring, which is a kind of stalwart of what we do. From there, the chief superintendent's picked up on some of the other kind of communication strands we've looked at. Over the course of the pandemic, we've had kind of fraud advice going into kind of queues in local vaccination centres. We've looked to really try and increase the numbers of individuals who are signed up to local neighbourhood watch projects as well. So there is that kind of collective focus and collective support from local community members. So, you know, I suppose to put it in context, it starts with those kind of detailed crime prevention conversations, build up a kind of a wee safeguarding mechanism around victims and then try and spread a message locally at as many kind of different opportunities as we can to try and, you know, pick up as many people and spread that message as broadly as we possibly can.
Could I just say, thank you very much to you both for what were very comprehensive responses. And it's good to know that Police Scotland is being proactive and proactive locally, which was part of really what my question was about, as well as in the wider sense, because we realise this is not just a local issue. And any feedback that we can get in relation to the fact that Dundee appears to be, well, is for a fact, higher per 10,000 population would be, would again be appreciated if that is possible. And I'm grateful for the responses. Thank you.
And next we've got councillor Duncan. Craig, do you have a question?
Yeah, thanks, Convenor. Actually, we've got two. There we go. But one is directly addressed within the reporting period under question. So we'll start with that one first. And it's on page 15 of the police report. And I'm just struck at the excessively high rate of vandalism in Dundee compared with the rest of the division. I just wondered if you had initial thoughts on that and what can we do about it?
Thanks councillor. I'll maybe come straight to Chief Inspector Fitzgerald for that one. Clearly vandalism and antisocial behaviour is a challenge and an issue that affects all of our communities. But the chief inspector will have that more specific local take. Ross?
No, thank you councillor. So I suppose for me, I think the vandalism rates, I would fairly directly correlate with our kind of youth antisocial behaviour problems. I would have to say, you know, across the north of the city, certainly into Broughty Ferry, which I know you have a particular interest in, and a kind of raise in those rates in the city centre in recent times. So there is a focus on there. We've got ongoing kind of operations around looking at how youths are travelling around the city and conducting those crimes. A wee link with that into kind of free bus passes, particularly towards the end of Q3, which is kind of potentially mobilising young people around the city and increasing the spread of where those crimes are occurring. So those two issues clearly linked in comparison to Dundee being higher than Perth and Angus. I would have to say again, it is that kind of that urban dynamic that's important that where kind of younger people are perhaps a little bit more anonymous than they may be in smaller communities across the rest of the kind of Tayside division. We'd say kind of positively, just moving into the start of this year, then instances of vandalism have started to reduce in comparison to last year to date figures. Naturally, broadly speaking, antisocial behaviour on the whole is trending in the right direction. Obvious vandalism is probably the kind of most stubborn part of that that we've yet to crack. But certainly seen some really positive steps within the city centre, particularly in terms of the focus that's been put on in that area. You know, we had previous issues along the waterfront, also into some of our fast food restaurant chains where young people were congregating, having kind of come off public transport. So a real kind of collective approach with retail outlets, restaurants and kind of local businesses in that area to try and tackle that. And also into the start of this year, a focus on trying to get some police officers working jointly with bus inspectors to try and engage with the young people as they travel around the city before they get to locations and actually kind of cause that crime in the first place. So a wee bit of proactivity in that space as well, which is certainly helping. So I hope that's useful to you. As I say, more than happy to take a look at it. And as I say, we'll track that vandalism rate and performance levels as we move through kind of Q4 into next year's reporting.
Yeah, no, thanks. Thanks very much indeed for that, because it actually links into what was going to be my second question anyway, because you've mentioned it in the report, although it's not in the reporting period, that there may be, and I stress, may be some linkage between free bus travel for under 21s and a rise in antisocial behaviour. I'm not sure if I know how true that is or not. But I mean, certainly in discussing the matter with the officers locally in my wards, they certainly seem to be of the opinion that it doesn't help. So I'm glad that the police are, well, to use a phrase, on the case. It brings me on to one other thing that I've asked at previous committees before, because I don't want to tar the youth with the, you know, the big bad brush. And we've mentioned before, what about the alternatives then for the youth? And we've talked about diversionary behaviour facilities, but I've heard no, absolutely no details about that.
Right, councillor, just to come back in on that. So I suppose it's a great question to ask and there's probably some really kind of exciting opportunities coming Dundee's way in the very near future. So I was fortunate enough to be at the What Matters To You investment day just a few weeks ago. So funding there provided for a kind of a youth club in Lough Yew, which is going to start meeting every Friday, looking to tackle that kind of that particular demographic. We've also got some focused work with street soccer coming as well. So I look at using their mobile kind of football pitches to deploy into areas where we're seeing higher levels of youth antisocial behaviour, whether that's in the kind of open spaces in the north or potentially bringing some of that into the city centre as well. And as I say, work with kind of third sector youth volunteers around the buses as well, which I know is a tentative link at the moment, but certainly anecdotally from bus inspectors, they are seeing increased issues. So looking to kind of actually engage with youth on the buses when they're engaged in that kind of travel. I think further to that, again, in terms of that What Matters To You space, which is a kind of vibrant group that's on the go just now, we're also seeing some diversionary activity and being funded to look at the kind of forthcoming school summer holidays. So potentially looking at projects that encourage younger people to spend more time in the company of their parents rather than having that kind of huge amount of unstructured time, which can sometimes lead to kind of poor decision making. And also through kind of our local primary school in the west of the city, just options around how we can provide additional kind of access to schools for those who need that wee bit more support and actually struggle without the routine of school through the holidays, which makes it difficult for them. So there are a real diverse kind of range of projects on the go that should be landing kind of in the very near future that are really focused on that kind of younger people. And as you say, trying to find a constructive use for individuals' time rather than just expecting kind of young people to make decisions for themselves and always make the right ones.
Okay, no, thanks very much indeed for that, because I'm very much aware that, you know, that there are only so many police officers available, you know, they can't be at the place at once. And so I think creating positive diversionary opportunities is key. So thanks for that.
Next on my list is councillor McGurvan. George, have you got a question?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. This has been raised earlier. We've seen an unwelcome increase in acquisitive crime. But my question surrounds, with the focus earlier on on fraud for Bailey McPherson, but for me, it's housebreaking for me is a big concern. So my question's about preventative measures. Are we seeing what preventative measures are in place with regards to dealing with this? Are we seeing increased patrols in hotspot areas? Are we using the CCTV mobile van in areas that there is high risk times? So yeah, just looking for a comment on that, please.
Thanks councillor. A really good question and it's absolutely forefront of our mind when we see figures rising in this respect, that it's not just around about the work that we need to do to detect those, undertaking these offences, but absolutely in the prevention space. So for the period that we are reporting on, we had started our operation after dark activity at the end of quarter two and that certainly followed through into quarter three. So that involved a quite significant leaflet drop around about the community. Engagement very much centred on crime prevention advice, whether that be appropriate lighting, additional security and particularly in those areas of the city that we've seen hardest hit. You, you know, in addition to that, any dwelling that gets broken into is subject of work thereafter, which involves again a targeted and focused piece of activity in the immediate area as well as subsequent advice. There is crime prevention camp, if you like, advice and awareness raised across our usual channels, such as through neighbourhood watch. And actually, the example awareness raising event that I just described the other day at the overgate, similarly, not just about fraud, but just in the general rise and challenge we've got in the acquisitive space and what people can clearly do to help themselves as well as what we give. In terms of proactive patrols, then certainly we look at the data in a fair bit of detail and we focus the sort of the briefings around about our officers being deployed to make sure that they are in the right places as far as possible at the right times. And that has led in terms of some detections to the capture of some travelling criminals into the area and repeat offenders. But to Chief Inspector Fitzgerald, for anything else you would maybe wish to add in?
So you've covered a kind of a range of activity there. What I would say is our housebreakings particularly remain under the kind of sole focus of our community investigation, you know, who largely provide the investigative response to those crimes with some support from proactive CID particularly. So the increase in kind of detection rates is welcome certainly, but you're absolutely right. As the numbers continue to increase, then those kind of focus patrols are absolutely vital. And also a kind of broader messaging around kind of home security and the potential use of ring doorbell CCTV and various other options to try and effectively target hardened kind of local addresses. I would say that the housebreaking statistics there also cover our kind of response to commercial housebreakings. So again, a huge amount of work goes down in the kind of background with the, with local kind of shopkeepers and other premises to make sure that the crime prevention advice is provided in the aftermath of any offending to provide, to prevent any kind of repeat offences taking place. But a real range of offenders in Dundee, unfortunately, some travelling in and also some kind of local repeat criminals, you do drive those statistics quite heavily that we're well aware of and are targeting our resources towards.
A supplementary chair. We mentioned their detection rates and on page 48, we see a table with regards to domestic rates in comparison with other areas in the division and also Scotland. But that's fine, seeing detection rates for that. The table above, I don't see a comparator with Scotland for recorded crimes for domestic housebreakings. So my question probably is, where do we sit in, I hate using the word leak table, but where do we sit in a table across Scotland with regards to recorded instances of domestic HBs?
Councillor McGurvan, thanks again for the question. I don't have the exact figures at hand, but what I can tell you is that acquisitive crime is seeing a trend of a similar nature, both regionally across Tayside as well as nationally. So I don't have the specific figures to be able to give you in terms of that comparator to other areas. But. but it's a consistent picture that we've seen emerging through the, the period of, and out of COVID and the times we are currently at.
Thank you. Councillor Shears, Pete, have you got a question?
Yeah, thank you Chair. And so on stop and search reporting, page 46. And it's reported that there is no disproportionate searching due to ethnicity taking place, which is very encouraging to hear, given the controversy around the practice sometimes. And but what I am concerned about is there's no breakdown or benchmark that has been provided for that. And so what's the benchmark for proportionate searching based on ethnicity? And could you provide the breakdown of searches based on ethnic, sort of how many people of a certain ethnicity were searched? Because we don't seem to have that information.
Thanks councillor Shears. So the, the, the sort of baseline in terms of what we would, we would be basing against in their stop search reports nationally tend to clearly take it around about groupings of, for example, ethnicity and race within, within communities. And then it's that proportion in respect of that. I don't have the, the figures at hand, but I can certainly take away that, that note to, to come back to you separately, to give you that, that breakdown. But, you know, absolute assurance that the, the, the level of scrutiny right the way up to the Scottish Police Authority around about our stop and search approach is, is really robust in, in making sure that those figures are poured over to make sure that there's a, a really clear proportionality around about the undertaking of any stop and search. And I think, you know, the, the positivity rate there that's explained in the report is, is hopefully as well an assurance in itself that we are focusing our stop and search activity on those that we clearly directly suspect, you know, may have involvement in, whether it be a drug search, whether it be a stolen property search or, or otherwise.
Thank you. And just one supplementary question, very quick. In terms of ethnicity reporting, is that taken by the officer or is it a self-report by the person who's been stopped and searched?
So I'm not a hundred percent clear from the last time I would have done a stop and search and using the notebook, I'll be honest with you. The electronic means of things. Ross, I don't know if you know that just offhand?
No, sir, just as part of the stop and search, there is a document that's filled in and that's self-reporting from the individual that searched. Is asked where their ethnicity is and that's subsequently recorded. And once it's recorded, a note and receipt of the stop and search is provided to the individual that's been searched. So they retain that record in order to, to give them that kind of reassurance that they can come back with any kind of complaint they may have. It's got a kind of recorded reference number amongst other things on it. So it's effectively self-reported immediately after recorded.
Thank you.
Councillor Flynn, Mark, do you have a question?
Yes, thanks convener. Can I just touch on road safety, if that's okay, and the importance of road safety around our schools? As you know, and you'll be aware, we brought on a school streets policy some time ago, and we've got it implemented around Fintre Primary School. But there's lots of reports basically of it being abused, and yet we don't see much enforcement around that area. As we move forward, we've got a number of schools, again with this policy in mind, are going to have safe zones around the schools. I think another five in the forthcoming year. And I just wondered, is there any way we can actually work a wee bit closer together to make sure that we actually see some more enforcement around the, the school to educate, but also to enforce if required and improve the area and prove the driving practices around those schools?
Councillor Flynn, thanks very much for the, the question. Again, I'll bring Chief Inspector Fitzgerald in in a second, just to give you that sort of local context around your question. But certainly in terms of, you know, road safety, Operation SIDA has been in, in place for quite some time. We use that to, to look at the range of activities, whether that be education detection, you know, enforcement, as, as you mentioned there. We use a range of analytical products with partners around about the roads that need the, the greatest focus. And certainly where that, that would be a school, then that would fall into that category. Clearly the, the safety of our children and, and general road users is, is something that is of focus. We've, we've spoken earlier on, on this session already. And whilst it's great to see the reductions in serious injuries that are being, you know, reported here today, we, we don't want to become complacent in any way, shape or form because one death and one injury is, is one too many. But Chief Inspector Fitzgerald, just in terms of any specific feedback in terms of the schools?
No, just to confirm that each school was, is clearly highlighted in the directed policing plans for each locality area. Just touching on the, the kind of focus on our vulnerable user groups, we absolutely would see kind of young school children, that kind of drop off and pick up time has been within that kind of vulnerable user category, just based on kind of decision making when they're in and around the school, the school area. So those, those, those patrols are done, they're done by local officers, they're done by our members of our road policing units as well. I suppose the, the kind of just look at the, the kind of collaboration between ourselves and the local authorities. I think there is probably more that we can, we can hopefully do in, in terms of the kind of road engineering design, kind of signage in and around the schools as that kind of scheme has rolled out across the city. I would be more than happy to kind of engage councillor Flynn and others on as, as the plans for the rollout of safe zones continues.
Can I come back, Chris here?
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks very much for your responses. I really appreciate the fact of the effort you'll put into this. I think as we approach the summer holidays and we come back to the school returning, could I maybe ask that we maybe see a higher profile around some of the schools, especially the ones where we've actually got the school streets programme in place? There's only one at the moment, but I think it's something we really need to educate people on because there's constant and repeated abusing, abuse of this area.
No councillor, no, no problem at all with, with trying to increase the kind of police presence in there. I think the, the education side is a bit of work for both Police Scotland and the local authority and I'm more than happy for us to be involved in that.
Councillor Roma saw your hand up. Stephen, do you still have a question?
Thank you convener. I think the point was largely covered. It was that issue of enforcement going forward. So I'm glad to hear that that's been offered, that we can work together in future, because I think enforcement is as important as education. Because if people don't believe that this is going to be enforced, it's going to be very difficult going forward.
Okay, thank you. Since there's no more hands up and no more questions, can we agree the information in this report?
Agreed. Councillor McGurk's got a question.
I can't even see Dorothy, sorry. Dorothy, are you there?
Yes, I did put it in the chat. I had a question.
Okay, go for it.
And thanks convener. My question, I'll keep it short because I know there's been a lot of questions in this section. My question relates to the table on page 33. And I noticed that nine out of 13 scores on detection rates are lower in this quarter. And I just wondered if you would like to make any comment on that?
Thanks councillor. Just so that I'm sure I'm on the right table. So is it page 33 in your pack or of the police?
Yes, of the bundle page. It's the summary report Dundee City LPA. Just from April to 31st December.
And so sorry, because the, the, the sheet that I've got, the document I've got in front of me is just the police report itself. In, in respect of which heading would it be that you're looking at for detection rates?
It's called Summary Report Dundee City LPA Police Scotland. It's March 33 in the bundle.
Right, okay. So I've got that page now and apologies if I could just ask you to, to just repeat, repeat your specific question around about detection rates.
Yes, I've noticed that nine, there are 13 detection rates listed. And nine out of the 13 are lower in this quarter.
Yeah.
And I wondered if you could comment on that?
Okay, no worries. I'll come to Chief Inspector Fitzgerald in a second in case you've got any additional local context. But detection rates often fluctuate is probably the place where I would, I would start. Some of our crime areas involve crimes and allegations that are, for example, non-recent in nature. That is certainly often the case in relation to some of the sexual crime that we, we deal with. Some of the, the crimes that we look at have a requirement for forensic analysis. And certainly where you get aspects of forensic analysis and crimes of the non-recent nature, it tends to mean that the catch-up, if you like, on detection rates, on, sorry, crimes that occur within that specific quarter, specific period, may take some time to correlate or correct. There's also a number of other varying factors as to detection rates, which can come about for a, for a host of, of reasons. Through the pandemic, for example, we've seen increased challenge in relation to, for example, our detections of shopliftings, just to take one as a specific case where the increased wearing of masks is then upon CCTV video and otherwise giving us additional challenges to, to clearly get an immediacy of detection. But the, the, the direct answer I would give back is that those rates do fluctuate. Some of them are more challenging than others, particularly the acquisitive areas that have been described. So for example, fraud, as we spoke about earlier on, has a fair degree of international work and element to it, which then, you know, takes and accounts for, for time in getting to detections. Chief Inspector Fitzgerald, if there's anything else you would wish to add on top of that?
So thank you. Just, just to touch on, on the return to the report. So I suppose my, my kind of comment would be that in respect of five of those nines that are showing a reduction within kind of 2% of last year-to-date figures. And when considering that kind of, that kind of level of change, we are talking minuscule numbers of crimes. So one, one in two crimes to kind of change the, change that negative into a positive. So, so we're, we're very much there or thereabout, I suppose. Just touching on some of the specific categories, so emergency service assaults, for example, a minus 2.2% reduction, but ultimately a detection rate of 97%. The reality being all of those crimes will, will detect positively because it's our own staff that have been assaulted. And those areas which cause concern, I think are the ones that, that we picked out of the report at the start in terms of the acquisitive crime statistics, where we're very clear on the fact that we are challenged in terms of occurrence rates in that particular area. And it is an area where, where we are, are working hard. But ultimately, yeah, I accept there's nine that are in the negative area, but, but largely they are very close to last year-to-date figures. And actually, and we'd be confident going into Q4 that we can turn those around.
If I could just make a, a comment. Thank you for that. I'm, I'm wondering then my, I understand then what you're telling me is that, that detection rates change over a period. I'll try and get my head around that. And I just, and I wonder if, what is the value of these scores in that case? Is there another way that that information could be presented that would, would give a more accurate picture of where we are with detection rates over the period?
So I think it's a really valid question councillor. The, the detection rates are of certainly value to us as a service. And I would hope value to, to members across the, the virtual room here in that they particularly give an indication as to the scale of policing response against the, the same reporting period for the previous year and against the, the five-year average. In terms of when detection rates start to solidify, so to speak, I think that's where it, it is an ever challenging conundrum. Because certainly for some of the, you know, the more serious crimes, for example, it, it, it could be a significant period of time until we get to a point of detecting a one, for example. But they certainly have value for our, value to us. And I would trust yourselves in terms of that year-on-year comparator, in terms of where we're at at a specific time, as has been indicated by Chief Inspector Fitzgerald, to be just those, those, that marginal bit out in terms of last year's performance, but also against that sort of five-year position is, is a helpful indicator of performance.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
So can we agree the information in this report? Yes. Right, thank you. Veronica?
Item number four, antisocial behaviour, first of October to 31st of March 2022.
I'd like to invite Tom Sterling to take us through this report.
Thank you convener. Yeah, this report is the standard report on antisocial behaviours. The statistics that relate to the, the work of the council's antisocial behaviour team. So we're reporting on Q3 and Q4 and we've presented the, the numbers in that way in the report, just for consistency, because we normally report on a quarterly basis. So I think in terms of picking out this report, similar pattern in, in both quarters in terms of the as previously reported, the, the three wards that generate the highest number of complaints remain coal side, East End and the Lockie, although there is some variation between Q3 and Q4 there. And we've also reported on the, the kind of, the, the, breaking down the categories of complaints that, that we receive or the areas that we focus our attention. I think what, what I would say is that, that this information that, and this breakdown does, I know, I know elected members were interested to receive this information, but it also helps the team in terms of where we focus our, our attention and also in terms of in our multi-agency tasking meetings with partners to, to where, where we need to work together. And I think that's the benefit of them. I think last year, for, for the members of those three wards where, where the levels were higher, we, we ran some specific brief, briefings on those areas. And I'd be quite happy to, to repeat that again for, for the new council, perhaps later in the year. And at those briefings we brought together. So this report really focuses on the complaints that, that, that the antisocial behaviour team received, but it's also, I think, important to see the wider context of the work that we do with partners to try and address this issue. And it goes beyond the antisocial behaviour team, involves our communities teams, youth workers, involves our housing colleagues and our, our police and fire colleagues. So if that would be helpful, I'm happy to offer those briefings again later in the year. And I'm happy to take any, any questions.
I think it's actually a really good idea because a lot of people have not had to use antisocial behaviour team yet. So it'd be good to, to get a wee bit of briefing about that. Councillor, Bailey McPherson, you're first.
Thanks indeed convener. And thanks to Mr Sterling for his input there. Could I start with a, a thank you in, in the sense that I think those of us who have contacted the antisocial behaviour team find that Gillian Lam and her team are extremely good at getting back to us and taking up issues. And I'm particularly grateful, as is councillor Crichton, to Gillian and other housing management colleagues who recently came along to a tenants' meeting about a particularly antisocial behaviour issue. And I think that willingness to engage with tenants who have concerns is appreciated and, and the willingness to be proactive is, is greatly appreciated. My question however, is really around the issue of noise, which I'm sure we would all agree has over the years been probably the predominant antisocial behaviour category. And I, I note from this report of the eight wards, in fact, it was the predominant issue in six of the eight. And in our own West End ward, 14 out of the 23 cases are, are in relation to noise. And I was just really wondering if there has been any thought given to anything around the be a good neighbour type message that the department could perhaps be sending out in a general sense. I find sometimes, not always, but sometimes with noise, there's not actually a desire on the part of the, the other tenant to be causing upset to their neighbours. It's just lack of forethought. You know, the, the, the music's up too loud type thing, the music's on too late type thing. The washing machine's put on at two o'clock in the morning and upsets the person immediately below and so on. And I just think that sometimes just sending the message about, particularly where you're living in flats, there's, there's people there's there's people immediately adjacent to you. And, you know, it's it's about maybe sending that message of be a good neighbour. And I was just really wondering if Mr Sterling had any views on that.
Yeah, thanks, Bailey McPherson. Yeah, that's something certainly we could look at. I mean, as we know, we have a very high percentage of 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 flatted, you know, accommodation in the city. And, yeah, and that is the source of quite a lot of the complaints. And you're quite right. It could be that people are, you know, just not aware. And certainly, the the approach the team take is very much a kind of graduated approach. And we certainly encourage discussion between neighbours. You know, that would be the first option would be to say it's not to be, you know, take an accusatory approach. It's to bring something to someone's attention. And then we have to judge it depending on how reasonable, whether we get a reasonable reaction, if you like. But yes, in many occasions, you're quite right, we do we do get that. So we could maybe look at some communications around along the lines you suggest, Billy McPherson.
I'm grateful for that. Thank you.
Councillor McGurven, George?
Thanks, Chair. Tom, I similar to Bailey McPherson, and you've highlighted yourself, Coalside, Locky, East End. We've been here for, well, some more longer than others, but for for my last five years, these are the three areas that are constantly showing high instances antisocial behaviour and and more focused on noise nuisance. So so for me, how do we change that cycle? Because it's ongoing and I didn't see, I could probably bet that we'll be here in three months' time and Coalside, Locky and East End will be the three highest indicators in noise nuisance. So for me, what what can we do differently? What preventative measures could we do differently that would that would stop that? Bring these three ward areas so there are no sitting first, second and third. Just listening to the last question there, it struck me as well. Is there any other good practice out there in local authorities across the United Kingdom that we can look look at and adopt? Because we need to tackle it, and it's been touched on that we're sitting here for months and months and years, and it's still the same. So how best do we tackle this?
Well, I I think it's a difficult question, councillor McGurven. It's just, I don't think we're ever going to get to a position where there are there are no antisocial behaviour complaints that 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 come into us. You know, you're talking about the behaviour of individual, how individuals choose or choose not to behave. And it's difficult to to control that absolutely. But what I would say is that, and I know the words that, yeah, we're talking about. Yeah, really. You know, keep keep coming to the fore, but I think part of that could be the nature of the housing stock that predominates in those areas. And certainly, we we do try to to mediate when we get complaints. That's our that's our first approach. So there are other factors. And I think although when you present the the statistics and and they can appear stark, I think as we try to demonstrate the the briefings we held, as I say, I'm happy to do that again, just go into the detail of some of those diversionary and and other activities that we we try and engage in other than just dealing with the complaints. But, yeah, if if there's good practice elsewhere that that we can pick up on and and adopt, I think one example of that would be, was reported before. We now have a noise app we can make available to complainants that makes it a lot easier for them to provide information to us. Because we always need some level of corroboration when we investigate complaints. Because if we're going to take enforcement action, you need to have the evidence to 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 back that up. And the noise app, rather than waiting for us to install our own noise monitoring equipment, the equipment allows people to to use their own smartphone or whatever. So so that's a recent development we've introduced in the last year. That's an example of good practice elsewhere. But we're always willing to look at other initiatives that that happen elsewhere that we could adopt, if, you know, if they're reasonable within the resources that we have.
Chair, could I get a supplementary, please?
Greg wants to come in first, but I'll let you back in in a minute, George. Greg?
Thanks, thanks, Convena. Just in response to councillor McGurven's question, there's a number of professional organisations that come together. One, for example, is the Housing Associations in Dundee and all 32 local authorities. So we'll certainly look to use those forums, councillor McGurven, to see or not whether there are any other ideas or ways in which local authorities have found so that they can effectively pass that back to the antisocial behaviour team. So we'll take that on board and liaise with those groups. Thanks, Convena.
Thanks, Greg. Right, George, your supplementary.
Thanks, Chair. That was good to hear from Greg with regards to his comments there. Just a quick one, you mentioned the noise app, Tom, that's a recent development. How many do we have for the city?
So so it it's not, what it is, it's what we can do with the noise app is we have a licence to use the app. We just, you know, we've got a you know, a contract in place to use the noise app. So it's not a matter of the how how many we have, it's whether it's whether it's right for that case. And then the antisocial behaviour team can allow access to the app. That's how it works. We need to be in control of who's, you know, which one of the, you know, the the complainants that that have the app, because they're recording data and submitting that to us. So we need to have some control over that. But but it's something, if if it's right for the case, it's something that we can use to help our investigation.
Okay, so just for clarity there. So if if we had five cases that adhered to the criteria to use the app, we could use, the licence covers the five cases?
That's my understanding, yes.
Right, but we're not sure.
No, I'm I'm pretty sure that is the case, yeah.
Right, okay, thanks, Chair.
And the next councillor is councillor Troland. Siobhan, you got a question?
Two, actually, thanks. I'm from Locky, so antisocial behaviour is is part of my caseload, and it started quite quickly. What I'm looking at is the the two quarters, the one for one to December 21 and the one from January to March 2022. And there's quite a difference. I'm looking at Locky specifically. It's quite an increase, actually, from, I think it's 52 to 76 in Locky, and then there's quite a drop in Coalside and for for, you know, the one quarter into the January to March. Is that kind of up and down normal? Is that just part of the kind of process? And can I quickly throw in another question? This might be kind of how long's the piece is done, but, you know, how many of these cases get resolved satisfactorily, do you think?
Okay, in in terms of the variation, then, yeah, I think what you've posed in your question is right. It does vary. I mean, there's always, as we've seen and we've heard, there are there are some areas that there's always some level of, you know, generally the highest number of complaints. But there's always some variation, and it's very difficult to pinpoint a a a reason for that. And in terms of how many get resolved satisfactorily, I mean, the 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 team will work with, you know, both people that are making complaints and those that are complained about to try their best to reach a resolution. And as you can see, a lot of them are resolved without having to resort to the kind of formal action. It depends what you what you you think of as as satisfactory conclusions. Some of them we have to take enforcement action, we have to take you know, go down the ASBO route or, in in extreme cases, look at look at evictions. But their 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 numbers are quite low. So we do tend to we do tend to, you know, as I said before, take a graduated approach. We'll try and resolve cases at the lowest level of intervention that we can, referring back to Bailey McPherson's comments that you know, if if it's some somebody's not really aware of what's, you know, that someone's bothered by their noise and and that's brought to their attention, that can resolve it, you know, it could be one phone call or one visit, or some of them go on for 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 quite a long time. And and there's there's always, sometimes there's there's often a level of neighbour dispute that comes into, and then it's quite difficult to 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 get a resolution. But but, yeah, there is always fluctuation. And our figures were, you know, affected by the, like everything else, affected by Covid and the lockdown periods, we saw some variations. It's difficult to pinpoint an exact reason for that. But, yes, there is, there certainly is fluctuation.
Can I just quickly ask a supplementary question? In terms of how the cases work out, you know, and, you know, mediation or ASBO, et cetera, is there a way we can access that data at local ward level?
Certainly, if if you've got specific questions, councillor Troland, I'd be quite happy to speak to you
Thank you.
directly about that, if that's helpful.
That is, thanks.
Right, councillor Malone, Charlie?
Thank you, Convena. The reason I don't have my camera on is because not, they don't envy to see me. It's because I'm having technical issues with my camera at the moment. I think that my question is very similar to councillor Troland's, and in some respects, some of the discussion we've been having previously. I I appreciate, Tom, that there's a really difficult job that the antisocial behaviour team have through my experience as a councillor in Locky. And as Bailey McPherson, I would commend the staff for doing their job under very difficult circumstances. I am aware of one particular case where, you know, two, two, two members of the antisocial behaviour team had to remove themselves from a safety perspective. As we talked about crimes against police earlier on, cases against police, but antisocial behaviour officers often get the same kind of threats and abuse. I think we've got, I think I welcome Tom's position on, let's have the briefing. But I'd like to perhaps suggest that we can extend that briefing more than just to the antisocial behaviour team. But I think there's quite clearly an issue with housing stock. I think there's also quite clearly an issue with police. Perhaps you've asked this question when the police were given their report. But I think what we need to do is come together and have a real look at this, because as George McGurven said, this can't keep going. Lives are being destroyed. I'm aware of a case today where somebody's had to flee their home because of threatening behaviour. Siobhan said, asked the question about how many of these get resolved. I'd like to also understand how many of these get closed. And without the kind of the outcome that people expect, I understand it's very difficult. You mentioned tit for tat. But in the case I'm citing just now, and I'm working on just now, it's very difficult for that person to do anything else except flee their home. So I I appreciate that. I won't go into details about the case. But I think that what we need to know is how many of these were dealt with successfully, at what level were they dealt with? And so we get an understanding of good practice in different areas. But also, how many of these cases get closed? Because, quite frankly, antisocial behaviour team have got limited powers legally, and it might be that they they have to close a case because there's no, they can't take any further. So it might need a different level of intervention. So I'd like to see the police housing yourselves, Tom, and the teams come together to have a discussion about the critical areas in the city and see if there's something we can do, because councillor McGurven was quite right. We need, we need set targets on how we are going to deal with this. And if it's a housing stock, okay, how do we create the capital spend needed in tenemented buildings in particular to help reduce noise pollution? So that's a bit of a ramble rather than a question. But I would just ask you to extend the invitation to the briefings to other agents, agencies that are involved in dealing with antisocial behaviour.
Yeah, happy to do that. And that's actually what we did the last time. We did have represented this from other agencies at those briefings, as I said, to try and widen it out beyond just looking at the the kind of ball statistics that we talk about, that are the subject of this report. So, yes, quite happy to try and make sure that the partners from other services, both within the council and from from where their partners attend any briefings.
And just to come back in very briefly, Tom, I would just like you to pass on my, I think, all the councillors in Locky's gratitude towards the antisocial behaviour team and the constituents that get the help and assistance of what is a vital service in the city. And I'm aware, obviously, of the multi-agency work that goes on. It maybe doesn't appear when we read the antisocial statistics, like the work that's done with antisocial behaviour, police and the team and stuff. So it's it's about augmenting where we are and improving where we are, rather than a question of competence with any of the agencies that are involved, because there's a lot of work goes on behind the scenes, and they should be commended for that.
Right, Lynn, you put your hand up, and now you've put it as a question in the chat, but since I had you on my list, you can go next.
And I think Bailey Keenan might be in front of me. I don't want to skip the queue.
Feel free.
I saw your hand first. That's how I've got you on my list.
Okay, okay, all right. So I I'd like to thank Tom and his team. When it was myself and Kevin Cordell, who were in Qunit Safety and Public Protection, I did ask for them to investigate the app, and they did go forward and investigate it, and now we've got it in place. So thank you for doing that. From the constituents that I've spoken to, it has been very well received and from staff as well. And I'd also like to put a little bit of meat on the bones with regards to this, Tom. Can you give us an indication of how many local authorities still have within their remit, a team like we have in the city? And also, I know that they're still on the call, so I'm going to make use of Ross, if it's okay. Because him and I had a very good informative conversation when he first came in that there is a big difference between criminal behaviour and antisocial behaviour. And we really do need to kind of get that sort of correct in people's minds. There's a difference between a washing machine at three o'clock in the morning and someone having to flee their home. So can we maybe get a wee bit in with regards to that so that we've got clarity that we, if we're dealing with it, do have this right signpost in in place, please?
Yeah, so in in terms of the, I I have knowledge of, you know, some other local authorities, and, you know, I'm not, I can't answer for all of them, but my my understanding is that that we take this, you know, quite seriously and put proportionately significant resources into dealing with antisocial behaviour, perhaps more than 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 certainly some other local authorities. But I couldn't say definitively. The the point you make about the difference between the yeah, the difference between, I mean, there is a, there is a, there is a spectrum, of course, of behaviour between antisocial behaviour and criminal behaviour. And we are, the antisocial behaviour legislation that that we, you know, operate under, does have its limitations, but we are, we are limited by that. That's not to say we won't try our best to resolve issues. But, yes, there are, there is a a division, but a kind of, it gets to a point where it becomes perhaps a criminal matter. But we do work very closely with police colleagues, both in terms of the kind of multi-agency tasking and coordination approach, but also if there if there is, you know, evidence of 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 criminality, then then we will link in with our police colleagues.
I've got Kevin next, but Charlie's put a point of clarification, please. Is it a clarification on something that's been said in?
Yeah, just just within the 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 last couple of minutes. I think councillor Short's point is is valid, but my point about the different agencies and about the antisocial behaviour, this, the person who's been made homeless through what is effectively criminal activity, this big guy has a dispute between neighbours about noise. So what I was trying to suggest is it's not just one or the other. It can often escalate from being what's relatively minor and could be fixed through mediation, if that fails. But it could become a major event in which somebody's traumatised. That's the point I was trying to get to. So I just wanted to clarify that I was aware that there is a difference between the criminal act and the antisocial act. But very, very quickly, an antisocial act can lead to criminal behaviour. Thank you, Convena.
Bailey Keenan, you're next.
Okay, Convena, there's been a number of questions tonight about how how we would be talked about the successes and, you know, what what are the cases that are closed with a success story or, you know, are closed kind of ongoing. But I noticed that in page 89, we obviously have 12 cases that have been cancelled, but no explanation as to why they're cancelled. Cancelled wouldn't suggest to me that they were resolved successfully. It would appear that they've maybe disappeared for some reason. And I'm wondering how we get a flavour for, or seeing there's a number of And I'm wondering how we get a flavour for, or seeing there's a number of other questions asked, how do we get a flavour for we're resolving matters, you know, we're making a difference to people's life, especially if we're spending considerable resources on it. How do we go about proving that we're being successful? How does that data gather up should someone go quiet? You know, stop being a nuisance or a matter of a couple of months and then start being the absolute nuisance to their neighbour again. So, you know, so as that we can improve people's quality of life. When we're looking at two hundred and eighty-odd cases, you know, partners, family in the house, you know, there is a tremendous number of people potentially affected and made, you know, feel very uncomfortable in their own home, you know, through various aspects of antisocial behaviour. So just really looking for a flavour of, you know, why were the twelve cancelled? How do we go about presenting something that gives us a flavour for the work? That we're resourcing the best we can and that we can move forward and we're solving problems for people.
Yeah, so yeah, perhaps we should have explained better in the report that cancelled category. But that's simply, it's a duplicate or it could be that, you know, we've not got sufficient, you know, contact detail information for the person that's made the complaint sometimes, you know. But predominantly, it's because it's been logged on the system, but it's a duplicate. So we're not going to count it twice. It's not that we cancel them because it's without, we wouldn't just ignore a complaint and cancel it. You know, it doesn't mean that. It's more a kind of administrative, you know, function. In terms of giving that better flavour, certainly have, maybe the briefings is a good forum to do that. But if we can look at, if you think you want something in the statistics of the way we present the report, we can have a think about how we would do that better for you, Bailey Keenan.
Can I maybe have a supplementary or make a comment? I mean, I think that when we're dealing with antisocial behaviour, then we try to give client constituents the best possible advice we can, you know. So, you know, if it's a case of, if it goes quiet for a few months, should we be telling them to hang in there? If it picks back up again, that last three months or six months would have counted that somebody's made their life miserable. So how do we best guide them to make sure they've got that level of log that, you know, that they know something he's going to take forward, the complaint serious, towards taking that serious action to ASBO or even eviction if need be.
Yeah, so if a complaint is open and then if it does go quiet for a lengthy period of time, yes, we're, the team are going to close that complaint. They've got, as you can see, they've got a lot of cases to handle. So that might be the appropriate action at that time. But if someone, if the, you know, antisocial behaviour recommences, then we would reopen the case. So the best thing, the best thing that we can, we can do is have good lines of communication between the case officer that's allocated the case and the person that is complaining. And we try and do that, we try and make sure we encourage good communication two ways. So if there is additional information about what's going on, then we would encourage, you know, your constituents to make that known to the team. But also, a lot of the time, we need to have corroborative evidence. So that might involve speaking to other neighbours or, you know, investigating a little bit further. So all these factors kind of play into what the rep, what the resolution is going to be. But certainly, I would say if a constituent, you know, if they're coming back to say, well, it started again, well, the answer is clearly just to get back in touch with the team again. And if it has been closed, there's nothing to stop us opening the complaint again.
Right, I'm not seeing any other hands or questions, so could we agree to note this report?
Agreed.
Yep. Veronica, next one, please.
Item number five, it's air quality update. This report is for noting.
Tom, can you take us through this report, please?
Thanks, Convenia. So this is our annual air quality report. The report seeks to remit the executive director to take forward the council's action plan and also to seek approval to submit information to Scottish ministers. We have to submit to Scottish ministers every year. We've provided information on the data, air quality data for the calendar year 2021. And we've also provided information on the performance of buses that were retrofitted in Dundee. And we're also noting that the low emission zone scheme was approved, was approved by Scottish ministers and is now formally introduced from the thirtieth of May.
First question from councillor Creighton, Michael.
Thank you. Just a question with regards to page one hundred and three with regards to Lockie Road. The no right turns action is really welcome in reducing emitting vehicles like cooing up. However, I understand from Bailey McPherson that the Sustainable Transport and Roads team was looking at other road measures to assist. And there was a briefing held for elected members a few months ago. Could I ask if it was possible to kind of update on this and perhaps briefing particularly for people like myself, who are newly elected members on the process of other viable measures?
Yeah, I'm not sure if any of my city development colleagues are on the meeting today. But I'll, I see that Mr Presswood's on, so he might be able to give a brief update.
Robin.
Yeah, happy to do so, Chair. There were a number of measures taken here as well as the no right turn, which I agree with councillor Creighton, has made a big difference in that area to vehicle dwell time. There were also changes made of the suggestion of local councillors around the light sequencing at the Pole Park Road junction, which again has facilitated matters. And then finally, obviously, I think members are well aware that the bus service twenty-eight has been converted from a diesel engine to an electric engine, which has made a substantial contribution as well. But I'm more than happy to arrange for an updated briefing for local members to be provided.
Thanks for that, Robin. And councillor Crookshank?
Thank you, Convenia. I note the air quality update report with interest, although I'm cautious not to celebrate too soon. Because as noted in the report, the figures for 2020 and 2021 are somewhat distorted by the effects of two national lockdowns. When the data for the 2022 was ratified, I hope that these positive results won't prove to be a lucky fluke. After all, Lockie Road and Meadow Side were both breaching the legal limits again by the end of the year in both 2020 and 2021. And the Seagate came very close to it again in December last year. Whilst there's clearly been a step in the right direction, I think there's clearly much more work to be done on tackling air pollution in our communities. I note that the mention of the local bus operators not only have the bid into our force, rounds of the Scottish government statement, abatement, sorry, retrofit programme with great effectiveness. According to the figures provided in the report, there has also been significant investment in other fleet upgrades, which I welcome in particular. Explod Dundee has invested fourteen million pounds in twenty-three low emission Emerald buses and twelve zero emission electric Emerald buses, all of which run routes through my ward. As more modern buses come online, I hope these, I hope more people will embrace public transport as a way to reduce both pollution and congestion at the same time. We simply need less traffic on our roads and more people walking, cycling and on the bus to make a real difference. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Councillor Flynn, Mark.
Yeah, thanks, Convenia. I'll just follow on from councillor Crookshank and just add a bit more to that. I think I totally agree with most of what you said. But I like to highlight the fact that the BEAR scheme, the retrofitting scheme, was funded solely by the Scottish government and to aim to improve air quality with the buses. And I think it was an opposition member in the last council criticised the fact that maybe they didn't actually work. Whereas in section five four, it clearly states they did actually make a difference within the city. And again, the investment in the twenty-eight route and the twenty-eight service, the twelve new zero emission electric buses was also subsidised by the Scottish government. And I think that just highlights the importance of their intent and making sure air quality is a priority for them going forward. Looking at the air quality issues, Tom, you may be wanting to say, twenty twenty-two, I know aren't ratified, but March seems to be a bit of a blip on most of them. And I don't know what happened in March, but maybe once they're ratified, it'll be a bit clearer. But just to add, Convenia, I just think appendix two clearly highlights a very good work we've done through difficult times. And I think that to highlight again, that the fleet section alone, we have now got one hundred and seventy-one electric vehicles within the council fleet. Probably the best within the UK, if not beyond. And I think again, school streets project, which you mentioned at the last committee, highlights again, the point of the last report with the police, sorry, highlights again, we are trying to create this air quality issues across the city and we will expand this process across the city. And appendix three highlights that even more. So I welcome the report, Convenia. I think it's got really good information. And I think going forward, we're doing a great job and I think we're going to have a big challenge ahead of us, but we're going to make sure we take it on. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Councillor Short, one.
Thank you very much. They do say that a broken clock is right twice every day. So here we go. Hopefully, fingers crossed, I'll get it right. I don't think Ewan McNauton is on the call today, so, Robin, I'll just leave this with you to work upon. Twenty eighteen, Tatran Minutes, I talked about how good stunt he was doing at that very point and did say that we needed a regional question with regards to this because many of the people who have an impact on the health and wellbeing of the people who live in the city are those who commute in on a travel to work basis. Therefore, at that point, I asked for parking rights. We will hopefully, or yes, we definitely will, because of the election, have a change in the chair of Tatran. So hopefully, it will be taken back to them that we seriously do need to have a look at getting this parking ride. And also the other one is, and I did have a constituency, a constituent right to meet this today. And it was about having bike storage in tenemental buildings. And many of us of a certain age do not want to carry our bikes up ten flights of stairs and then have them in the hallway, causing a nuisance. So I think we do do really well in all things when it comes to transport and changing modal shift. We are punching in these twenty-six square miles of perfection, but we do need that regional support. And we do need things on the ground to support the people in the city who don't have access to a car. Thank you.
Robin, do you need to come in?
Yeah, many thanks. I think on the point, the point that councillor Short has made about Tatran, I couldn't disagree with a word that she has said. Because Tatran have a central role there. And we've previously, I think, highlighted that we intend to develop a hierarchy of transportation documents. And the overarching one, which Tatran are working on, is currently being developed. And then that allows us to do the Dundee piece, which sits underneath that as a key sister document. So we certainly agree and I think that there is the potential for Tatran, I'll be tactful, that there's the potential for Tatran to accelerate that work and to respond to the kind of challenges that I'm sure councillor Short represents the views from politicians across the region. In terms of the bike storage, we are looking at a pilot scheme to provide on-street bike storage. We know that they've been piloted in other cities and have been successful. And given Dundee's absolute commitment to active travel, that would be a natural follow-on from some of the other initiatives that we've done. So we'll keep members informed about that.
Thank you for that. So can we agree to note this report? Right, agreed. Veronica, the next one, please.
Item number six, use of regulation of Investigatory Powers Scotland Act two thousand and Regulation of Investigatory Powers Act two thousand. This report is for your approval.
Now, I think it's Mr Many that's going to speak to this one.
Thanks, Convenia. I'll be brief. Members will note from the report that directed surveillance has been used twice in the last year for which we report. I'm very pleased to report a positive inspection from the Investigatory Powers Commissioner's Office. And members will also note the actions that officers have already begun to take as a result of that inspection. I'll be very glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Roger? No? No, definitely no questions. So can we agree this report? Yes, thank you. Veronica?
Item number seven, Community Payback Orders Annual Report, twenty twenty-two, twenty, sorry, twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one.
Glenn, are you on this call?
Yes, I am, Convenia. I'm here and thank you and thank you, elected members. This is the usual annual report then on the operation of community payback orders. It covers the period twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one. There's a usual Scottish government embargo and publication of the report, but that embargo's now been lifted and we can publish it locally. To bring it completely up to date, we have compared the twenty twenty, twenty-one period with the preceding twelve-month period and the subsequent twelve-month period. So you have data in there which covers the last three years. And as you can see from the report, overall, it's very positive. It shows how the pandemic has affected different parts of the justice system in different ways, but how the service has worked with a range of different partners to sustain support and supervision of people sentenced to a community sentence by the sheriff court. As an appendix, appendix one outlines the range of different types of unpaid work carried out over twenty to twenty-one. And appendix two outlines a case study. So if you have any questions at all, I'm happy to answer them. And Martin Day, the service manager, is also here today, may be able to answer questions as well.
Thank you. Councillor Duncan, Craig, have you got a question?
Yeah, thanks, Convenia. Just a quick one, do we, about unpaid work? And just to begin with, just to recognise that obviously during the period under question, it was hard, hard way business as usual because it couldn't be for obvious reasons. And I'd just like to sort of be paid particular thanks to the work of the staff that would normally have been involved delivering this service, but who were otherwise employed delivering PPE and such like during the pandemic. So just to express thanks for that. As for the unpaid work, I think, you know, as a concept, it's a very worthwhile one. Obviously, it was not possible during the pandemic times of, for example, twelve people on a minibus going anyplace. I think we all understand that, but I just would be grateful for an update as to where we are now with it. Are we like getting back to so-called normal?
Yeah, thank you for the question, councillor Duncan. It's a good question, obviously a pertinent question, given where we are with the recovery process at the moment. And in terms of where we are, if you look at the twenty nineteen to twenty period, over forty-six hours, thousand hours of unpaid work imposed by the court. And we carried out thirty-one thousand hours of those, so roughly about sixty-six percent. At the height of the pandemic, twenty twenty to twenty-one, around about seven, seven thousand hours, so drastic reduction because of the impacts of the pandemic on the court. And we completed around about five thousand of those, so a similar proportion, but obviously drastically reduced in number. And over twenty-one to twenty-two, seventeen thousand hours and eleven thousand completed by people in the community. So again, about the same percentage. What we're now seeing is an increase again in the number of hours imposed by the court. So if you compare March to April, just this year, there's been a five percent increase. It's gone from twenty thousand outstanding hours to twenty-four thousand outstanding hours. But we have a roadmap, we have the recovery plan in place. And following a meeting with our health and safety colleagues just last week, we're just about to relax the staff-client ratios so we can carry out more work with more people more often.
Thanks, thanks for that. Thanks, thanks for that, because, I mean, obviously, these have been unprecedented times that none of us have heard to deal with before. So it's good, good that, you know, this important service is getting back to, you know, some semblance of normality. I think it's often quite wrong whether guarded by some people as a soft option, but actually the correct way to the guard is that, you know, sending people willingly away to prison, bursting at the seams anyway, is actually not a good thing for society to be doing. But on the other hand, wrongdoers do need to be punished in some way. And so these kind of schemes are desirable, in my view.
I'm not seeing any other hands up, but I'd like to pay tribute to Martin Day, who's with us this evening. This is his last meeting before his retirement. So I'd like to thank him for all his hard work over thirty years. And he's been very helpful, he's always willing to answer questions, and M D hasn't met him yet. You've missed your chance. So thank you, Martin, and have a really, really great retirement, and you won't have enough hours in your day very shortly.
Thank you very much. Just chased the two-year-old out of the room, so. But yes, retirement will be interesting as well.
Okay, thank you, Martin. And I think that's the last item on the agenda. So I'd like to thank you all for participating in this evening's meeting. So thank you, and I'll see you at the next one.
Thank you, Convenor. The next committee is the Neighbourhood Services Committee.
Hello, and welcome to this evening's meeting of the Neighbourhood Services Committee. This is the first meeting of the Neighbourhood Services Committee for this term and also for me. So welcome to the meeting. We have declarations of interest and four reports to get through. So I'll turn first to Veronica and ask her to deal with declarations of interest.
Item one, declarations of interest. Are there any declarations?
So thank you, Veronica, I think there are no declarations. So can you, can you take us to the second item?
Item two, Dundee's biodiversity action plan annual progress report. This is for your information.
Thank you, Veronica. So in twenty twenty, Dundee City Council published our first biodiversity action plan and outlined how we will fulfil our duties under the Nature Conservation Act. And this is the second annual progress report. The plan involves us working in partnership with many, many local partners over a very wide range of actions, and these are detailed in appendix one to the report. There are a total of eighty four actions in this plan, and I'm pleased to announce that eighty six percent of them are on target and three percent of them have been completed. This is a significant achievement over the last two years, given the restrictions that we've had to work with. While COVID nineteen restrictions did slow us down on progress on eleven percent of the actions, there's now a plan to accelerate community engagement and allow us to catch up. So I'm looking forward to reporting back to the committee on our progress in early twenty twenty three. The recommendation is that the committee notes the work undertaken to date and the associated integrated impact assessment. So I'm now going to turn to Mr. Boyle to ask him if he wishes to add anything at this point.
Thank you, Convenor. I don't think I should add anything more at this stage, but be happy to take any questions to us this, Convenor.
Okay, so I'm happy to open this up to questions if anyone has any questions in relation to the content of the action plan.
So, Convenor, Bailey Keenan, councillor Croke Shank, Bailey Scott, councillor Crichton.
I'm on the wrong page, so it's in the chat, sorry. So councillor Croke Shank, sorry, Bailey Keenan first.
Okay, thank you, Convenor. Yeah, Convenor, I think there's some things to be welcomed in the report, obviously the reduction of herbicides and the use of herbicides, I think, is something to be noted. And I'm just wondering whether, you know, given that we will still receive complaints about weeds growing in the curb, if there is another more environmentally friendly way of dealing with that and whether there's an increase in road sweeping that would make a kind of difference towards that, building up in the curbside that where weeds would tend to grow from. And the other question is in relation to, I noticed a press release recently suggesting that there's blue-green algae at Clatto reservoir. And as much as I would discourage any beefy going for a swim in the sort of water, the temperatures will have, and, you know, in any kind of wild water in the summer, you know, last summer, we seen an endless number of young people using that for a swimming pool. And, you know, given the number of people that walk and use it as a leisure facility, walk their dog, I remember having a family pet that you couldn't keep out water, no matter how much you tried. And, you know, given the dangers that are involved there, you know, the press release really isn't, you know, going to stop everybody, as much as I hope it deters people and I hope that people stay out of that water, just given the safety of it. But wondering whether there is anything that we can do to sort of aerate the water and make it a much more environmentally friendly place to use, given that we used to use it for outdoor activities such as Antrim Centre. And indeed, even last summer, I think I've seen a number of schoolchildren using it with boats, you know, as part of Antrim activities, activities with schools. So I'm wondering what we've got in mind for that and in light of the sort of cut down on weeds at curbsides.
Thank you very much, Bailey Keenan. There are two questions that I also had. One is directly related to the report and the use of pesticides. So I'll hand over to Mr. Boyle to address that in the first instance. And your second question about blue-green algae, I think is worth having an answer here, although it's not directly related to the report. So I'll hand over to Mr. Boyle for that too. Mr. Boyle, who I understand is here and poorly. So thank you very much for being here this evening, Mr. Boyle.
Thank you very much, Convenor. It's just COVID, but I'll try my best if my voice holds out. Convenor, the point raised by Bailey Keenan is an important one in terms of the use of herbicides and pesticides. I am so pleased to be able to report to committee that we have made significant reductions in the use of herbicides. Herbicides are the only remaining type of pesticide.
Shoot, no shoot, that's COVID that's gone.
All right, sorry, we lost you there for a moment, Mr. Boyle.
If you don't mind, I'll just go on to voice only, because I'm having connection problems. But as I said, the points were, no problem, thank you. Points are well made by Bailey Keenan, and we do, we have made significant progress in reducing the herbicides. I did warn committee last year that we can't continue to make those exponential reductions, but we will do our level best to do that. One of the reasons why we can't guarantee it to go on much longer, having reduced over sixty percent in the last two years, is the very point that Bailey Keenan makes about the need to maintain our carriageways and footways. And I wish I could say it would be as easy as replacing use of herbicides with sweeping. It's simply not that, that, that simple. We need to maintain the infrastructure and weed control is the only and most effective way of doing that. That said, we do use and we are starting to introduce increased mechanical sweeping. So hopefully that alleviates some of the concerns and some of the points that the Bailey Keenan has rightly made. With specific regards to the blue-green algae at Clatto, what I should update the committee on, that this is a problem that doesn't belong specifically in so way to Dundee. It's a naturally recurring seasonal problem throughout the UK and indeed throughout the world, follows the same pattern each year. And unfortunately, there's very little we can do to prevent it happening in watercourses, and there's no effective treatments, which I would be happy to recommend to committee. That said, as with other local authorities, the favoured approach is for officers to regularly monitor our watercourses. We do this in concert with the Teyside authorities and with NHS Board at Teyside. We have got a blue-green algae action plan that we work towards and we monitor. And we put in the approach taken as for that regular monitoring to take place, and only when it's appropriate to put clear signs, warning notices out to ensure the public that they're advised of the dangers caused by algal blooms, so that they can take the appropriate measures to avoid coming into contact with these toxins and also obviously to protect their loved ones and their pets. And my final point to close on Bailey Keenan's question is to offer some reassurance that that sign only goes out when it's required. And because we're undertaking that monitoring, which is analysed by CIPA, we were able to take the notices away, we will do that, and all those activities around Antrim and at Clatto can continue when it's safe to do so. Hopefully, that answers the question, Convenor.
Thank you, Bailey Keenan. Do you have a supplementary or are you satisfied with that response?
That would be enough of the response.
Thank you very much. It's councillor Croke Shank next with a question.
Thank you, Convenor. The Maryfield Ward is home to one of Dundee's most beautiful green spaces, Baxter Park, along with the Swan Ponds and Sleser Gardens. As noted in the report, these precious spaces became more important than ever during the pandemic. Whilst I recognise and appreciate the council's efforts to stimulate more biodiversity for the good of the environment, I've had residents contact me in relation to certain, well, the rewilding projects, with comments such as they look more like an attempt to pass off spending cuts on outdoor maintenance. The worry about these spaces being unprotected, so dogs can run in and be harmed or young children. So I'm just wondering, will the council commit to making sure that all of our natural spaces will be suitably maintained and presented? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Croke Shank. I accept that change is always difficult, and especially when you're transitioning from one model of maintenance to another. And the council is committed to communicating with communities to make sure that they're aware of those changes. I'll just ask Mr. Boyle if he wants to add anything more at this point. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Convenor. Just to back up councillor Croke Shank's point, which is well made, we are endeavouring an honest and sincere engagement with every community around the city towards its twenty seven biodiversity naturalised grassland areas. We've undertaken specifically with regards to Baxter Park consultation with friends of group and other interested residents who are not affiliated to any groups, and we've made subtle changes to try and keep everyone happy with the balance. But that being said, there's an absolute requirement for us to live up to the promise that we made from the biodiversity plan to reduce herbicide, just to reduce the level of maintenance that we do and take it off the norm and to start contributing to saving the planet. And that's really why these things are in place. That being said, I've got to strike a balance with the point that councillor Croke Shank's been made, and given absolute assurance, we're committed to an appropriate and sincere level of maintenance across the city with all our lovely green spaces, Convenor.
Councillor Croke Shank, do you have a supplementary?
Just to say, you know, these areas can be fenced off in some way so that dogs and young children don't accidentally run into them. That would be useful from the resident's point of view.
The point that we're at at the moment is we're noting the action taken to date, and we will be coming back to the committee early next year. And I'm certainly keen to get stuck into the detail of this action plan and work as hard as possible to make sure we are proactive in communicating. So that we will come back and we are paying attention and I'm happy to speak to any groups on these issues, councillor Croke Shank. The next person that I have a question from is Bailey Scott.
I had two questions, Convenor, and the first one has been answered. It was to do with weeds and herbicides. But my other question is to do with the funding for controlling the red squirrels. And I know that the funding expired at the end of last year. I just wondered whether we're going to be able to secure funding and whether we'll be able to get the amount of funding that we require. And if we don't secure additional funding, then what steps will the council be taking to support our red squirrel population?
Thank you, Bailey Scott, very serious question. Mr. Boyle, do you have any update on potential funding?
Yes, I can update committee, Convenor, that we've actually been provided with another allocation, a small allocation of, it's over eighty thousand pounds through the Scottish Government's Nature Restoration Fund. And I would be looking to put forward a recommendation that utilizes, utilises some of that funding towards the squirrel, the red squirrel conservation that we've, that has been outlined by Bailey Scott.
Bailey Scott, good news indeed, good timing. Do you have a supplementary or?
Oh, that's good news, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Crichton is the next with the question.
Thank you, Convenor. The award of fifty four thousand pounds for woodland management and pathwork for Greater Bogay is very welcome, particularly as me and Bailey MacPherson have had concern, park users in the past, about some of the paths deteriorating. Can officers give an indication of what works have been carried out and any further plans you have improving the paths at Greater Bogay?
Thank you, councillor Crichton. I'll hand over to Mr. Boyle, but that may be something that he could forward you the information on after the meeting. Mr. Boyle, can you just confirm how you will deal with that request?
Yeah, that's correct, Convenor. There's too many specifics on that to provide at this committee, but I can happily do that with the follow-up with councillor Crichton after this committee announcing.
Thank you. Councillor Crichton, would you be happy to send an email with the details about the question?
More than happy, Convenor.
Okay, thank you. We've got Bailey MacPherson next, please.
Thanks, Convenor. My question's really about the actions under communication and awareness raising, and in particular, the action around having an annual programme of events is widely promoted and well-attended. And as the report alludes to, it was not possible to have a face-to-face Dundee Flower and Food Festival in twenty twenty one, obviously due to COVID. And that remains the case, of course, as you know, in relation to the current year. And I was just really wondering if officers could give us an update as to where they are in relation to thinking about next year, because I sense from constituents as a real desire, see the return of the Flower and Food Festival. I think we all understand why it has had to be virtual over the last period, but it would be very good to see it return at Camperdown in twenty twenty three. And I was wondering if Mr. Boyle could give an early indication as to what officers' thoughts are in that regard.
Thank you, Bailey MacPherson. I know that this also overlaps with city development, but I'll ask Mr. Boyle to respond.
Thank you, Convenor. It's not a specific answer I can give on this just now, other than to give some reassurance to Bailey MacPherson that there will be another virtual Flower and Food Show this year, this September, the first weekend in September, as has been the last two years. Thereafter, there has to be some detailed consideration with the members and the administration about the future of the event to see where it's best placed, whether it would still be in Camperdown or in the city centre, or perhaps take a different format. So rather than try and answer a question, I don't have the full answer to just now, Convenor, I'd rather pick this up at a later date.
Thank you, Mr. Boyle. And Bailey MacPherson, do you have a suppl-
Yeah, could I come back on that? I hear what Mr. Boyle's saying, the fundamental point, I think, is that, I think that the world is a little bit all zoomed or teamed out. And I think definitely there would be a desire, and I would certainly say, I speak for a lot, in saying that there would be a desire to see it return. I hear the point Mr. Boyle says that there has to be some thought as to how that is managed going forward in terms of location and so on. It's worked very well at Camperdown over many years, but I, you know, I think we all obviously all take stock from time to time as to how it is done. But what I would be grateful Mr. Boyle could give a commitment to is keeping all members of the council updated as to progress on this and seeking views of elected members throughout that process.
Thank you, Bailey MacPherson. I hear your request and will aim to ensure that people are all advised about future plans. The next question is from councillor Roberts, oh, sorry, is it Bailey Roberts? Sorry, Christina.
It's a bit of a question as well as a comment. I cleaned out my frontage of my house. Um, I cleaned out my, uh, frontage of my house, um, along the pavement edge just after winter and I've got absolutely no weeds. And that was just a quick sweep of all the weeds and the, the grit out was sitting there. I'm the only one in my street that doesn't have any weeds outside my house. But, um, as for mechanical cleaning, that's fine, but there's so many vehicles sitting on the edge, at the edge of the road. How do you plan to use this mechanical weeding? You know, for, uh, cleaning which gets rid of some of the weeds. It doesn't get rid of them all. But how do you plan to do that if you're not going to knock on doors or stick a leaflet through saying we're doing this street, that street, whatever street on whatever day? Um, just to keep the, the sides of the streets clear to, to let the machine up.
Thank you councillor Roberts. I will remind people that what we are meant to be doing at this point is noting the progress made, but I'll allow Mr Boyle to come back and, and offer his views on mechanical street cleaning and part vehicles.
Tha- thank you, Convenor. I think it has taken us quite a bit off what the, the report was, but just to give some reassurance that, you know, we're looking at a machine sweeping improvement. That doesn't mean, and I've got to be honest and balanced here and say that that doesn't mean that we're going to be able to provide a dedicated machine sweeping and mechanical removal of every weed and every footway and every pavement, every garden weight in the city. And indeed, one of the things that I'm hoping to take to, um, to, to members, um, in, in relatively near future is a wee emphasis on take pride in your city. And I suppose to put forward more of the stuff that, uh, you know, that Bailey Roberts is an excellent exponent of, of taking that pride in, in doing a bit. You know, as we all should be doing as residents to, to make that little bit of difference. Uh, so I'd be hoping that we can explore that in more detail and I'd be happy again for us to, you know, have a kind of more detailed conversation with members about that, if that's helpful, Convenor.
Thank you. It does get rid of, uh, the use of, uh, you know, any weed killers. If you do that yourself, it, it does get rid of the weed killing problem.
So we look, we look forward to a briefing from Mr Boyle about alternatives. Can I go next to councillor Short? So this is a question in relation to the actions taken.
Yes, it is. Um, I, I noted what councillor Cookshank said. And I do agree, we have some incredibly beautiful places, um, across, um, uh, Maryfield. Uh, I did however meet with, um, the, uh, chair of the Friends Baxter Park. And we had a lovely discussion, uh, with the, um, architect who has changed the, um, the flower gardens which sit, um, either side of the pavilion. So now they look beautiful. And they worked very well with the Friends Of with regards to how the park will look going forwards. I'd also, uh, like to pay tribute to, uh, Mr Lothian, who is the head of the Morgan. And who had, um, allowed basically, um, the Eden Project to go in and churn up the lawn. Now, anybody who has ever been at the Morgan will know that that's almost sacristanque, that, that ground. And, and but to, uh, to be involved in the planting was incredible. And it fills my heart with joy to know that, um, that comes from the long, the young people. And if we're going to do this and we're going to make a city for the young people and the future of this city from decisions that we make in this room, can we remember that that's what we're doing? We're making them for the young people. And as it's been said, it's about saving the planet. It's not about worrying about the next election or the postbag that comes in. It's about that whole citywide and then Scotland-wide and then worldwide view so that we've got a planet left for those parents to inherit. So thank you for all your endeavours. I very much appreciate it. And I look forward to my great-great-grandchildren, uh, remembering this day when I wax lyrical about what we were doing for their future.
Thank you for that rousing endorsement and councillor Short and I'm repeating my offer to meet with the Friends Groups. We've now got a question from councillor Lynn.
Yeah, it looks like all three Maryfield councillors have got something to say about Baxter Park tonight. Because I do as well, having received a number of representations from constituents regarding their concerns about the, the, the wild areas, uh, of, of the park. Uh, Tony Boyle and, and Jay, sorry, Jay, I don't think you're here, but I can't remember your surname. Were good enough to accompany me a couple of weeks ago on an hour-long walk around the park. Where Tony was good enough to, uh, address a lot of the concerns and, and give some assurances. I also met a week later with Friends Baxter Park, again went on a, on a walk around for an hour, listened to their, uh, con- concerns. You know, whilst I can see the logic behind the biodiversity and the welding of the parks, I think it's really important to, to remember that these are the green spaces for our citizens. Baxter Park, I think, being the preeminent one in the city. Uh, other than Camperdown, of course, which is much bigger. And I think we should really try and ensure that the wilded areas at least have some aesthetic appeal. Uh, given that they're in parkland and, and, and don't just become like an overgrown wilderness with huge dachy leaves plants growing everywhere, uh, uh, as, 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 that's what happened last summer. So, uh, I'll, I'll certainly be keeping an eye on, on what happens this summer after the assurances that have been given by Tony. I know the Friends of Baxter Park have, and, um, I hope the, the way forward for, for biodiversity uh, in Baxter Park and the city generally is one which will accommodate the wishes of, of everyone. So that's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Lynn. Um, I just have to say that as an organic farmer for twenty-two years, we have to be very clear that managed biodiversity is not neglect. And we have to distinguish these two things in culture. To manage biodiversity as it does to manicure the lawn. So I echo your sentiments and we will pay attention to this. And final question for this report from councillor Flynn.
Yes, thanks, Convenor. Can I just say that the old Bal Dragon School is actually a beautiful wild flower area now. And that actually looks fantastic. And I have to applaud the Dandelion Project up at Fairmuir Park. But going back to the report, Convenor, I think your team have done an excellent job and the challenges before, before them, I think they're making great progress. But I've got a question for Tony. I'm sorry, Tony, you're going to have to answer this with Covid and hopefully you're okay. But I'm talking about the giant hogweed issues that we have, which seems to be developing and coming from the Angus down the stream. And there seems to be issues with regards to the legality of being able to enforce any works being done. Is there anything being done to try and address this problem?
Mr Boyle, um, I know that we did have to talk about photo opportunities and I did volunteer to cut down giant hogweed, but I don't think I should have to do it on my own. But Mr Boyle, could you respond to councillor Flynn's question? Still there?
I think the IT is going to come in. I'll just leave that, Convenor. I think he's probably right.
Yeah, we can take that up as a, you know, after the meeting.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you.
So that's all the questions I can see. Um, the request was that this, the contents of this report be noted. And hopefully people heard that we will be coming back, um, you know, with more details on actions early next year. Are people happy to note the contents of the report?
Agreed.
Thank you. Okay, the next, you, Veronica, for the next item. Just checking I've got your name correct. Yes, sorry.
Yeah. Item three, purchase of bins and containers. This report is for your approval.
So as Veronica's explained, this report is seeking committee authority of wheeled bins, euro containers, skips and specialist containers that we need for our neighbourhood recycling points. The budget of a hundred ninety-one thousand is approved within the recycling and waste management budget for twenty-two, twenty-three. And the annual purchase enables us to meet our objectives as set out in the recycling strategy action plan for twenty twenty, twenty-five. Um, so the committee has been asked to approve the purchase through the normal Scotland Excel framework. I'll ask Mr Boyle if he wishes to add anything and at this point.
Thank you. As you'll probably have noticed, Convenor, I dropped out again there just when councillor Flynn was finishing his point. And just to give some reassurance that, yeah, we are looking at active control and invasive non-native species such as the giant hogweed, tammely and balsam. Um, and, and other, uh, other, uh, similar, uh, non-native species. Uh, I can maybe pack that issue up in more detail at a later date. Um, in terms of the, the, the bin purchases, it's, it's pretty straightforward. It's just the report that comes every year. I'm just looking for approval, Convenor.
Okay. So can I ask the committee to approve the purchase of the bins as per the budget? See no dissent. So thank you. Our next.
Question.
Who have I missed? Oh, sorry, is that Bailey Scott?
So Bailey Keenan.
Bailey Keenan first.
Okay.
Sorry, Bailey Keenan first.
I know it's, I know it's an annual report and I probably asked the same question last year. What we're getting for more money? You know, it's, it's a hundred ninety-one thousand pound. So what, how many containers are we buying and of what different types are we buying? And I suppose seeing as we've seen it there last year as well, how does it compare to the numbers that were bought last year? And we're paying more money this time, uh, or we're buying less. So that, that would be useful. I realise officers probably don't have that to hand, so quite happy for that to be circulated.
Thank you, Bailey Keenan. I will ask Mr Boyle if he has that level of detail and if not, if he can respond to you by email. Mr Boyle, are you with us?
Ye- yes, for the time being, Convenor. Thank you. Uh, yeah, and I do have a lot of level of detail, but I'm conscious of the, of the committee. Um, to offer some quick reassurance to Bailey Keenan that we go through an extensive refurbishment programme. We just don't buy bins in for the sake of them. There's a lot of refurbishment that goes on, which is part of this arrangement we're putting forward to committee. I'd be happy to, to provide Bailey Keenan with more specific detail as requested, Convenor, uh, out with this meeting.
Con- Convenor, can, can I maybe make another comment? It's in relation to the number of brown bins that probably lie about the streets and in back gardens that we've never collected in. Uh, you know, that, that people have probably filled them once in their back garden. They didn't go out in the street. And, and I'm wondering whether we should have some kind of amnesty of, uh, we'll collect it, empty it and bring the bin back in. Uh, because, you know, it might well save, uh, some money i- in, in one year at least of no having to buy bins.
Mr Boyle, I know that we have collected in extra bins, but specifically in relation to the brown bins.
Yeah, yeah, from memory, um, Convenor, I can provide reassurance to Bailey Keenan. It's about three and a half thousand brown bins we've actually brought in over the last couple of years. So it should be best assured that we're actually actively bringing these bins in and reusing them and also refurbishing where appropriate rather than just buying a new bins. So I can absolutely provide that reassurance, Convenor.
Thank you. Um, Bailey Scott.
My question was similar, Convenor, it was just to make sure that we are collecting bins from people who no longer require them. Because it's not just a multitude of brown bins you see all over the place, but there are still grey bins in some streets that now have communal, uh, rubbish, um, collection rather than individual grey bins. And there's a number of blue bins I see still sitting around the place. So I just really wanted to make sure that before we purchase new bins, that we are collecting all the bins we could possibly pick up from elsewhere.
Bailey Scott, I can, I confirmed that I had a conversation with Mrs Swirlin, who isn't here this evening, um, about this and the success of the previous attempt to collect extra bins. So that's definitely something I could pick up again with her to make sure we follow through. I can't see any more questions. Hopefully I'm looking at the correct screen. So are people happy to go ahead, um, with the purchase of these bins as per the budget? I don't see any dissent this time, so we'll take that as approved. Veronica, can you introduce the next item?
Item four, coffee pod recycling. This report is for noting by members.
Thank you. So this, this report addresses concerns raised at the earlier committee meeting in February about the growing need to recycle used coffee pods. The manufacturers have acted to create a not-for-profit company called Podback and householders with these machines can go online to the Podback website or, and order free recycling bags and find out where their nearest collection plus point is. And this report essentially asks the committee to note that officers are continuing to work with Podback both to promote the collection system through our A to Z recycling guide and through our website. And we're also asked to note that officers will continue to explore the option of creating Podback drop-off points at our recycling centres. Mr Boyle, is there anything, um, you wish to add or is that clear enough?
I think that's clear enough. Thanks, Convenor.
Um, I'll open this up for questions. Does anyone have any questions or are they happy to note the contents of the report?
Just, uh, just had a comment, Convenor, if that's okay?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, sorry about that. Maybe you can't see it.
Thank you.
But, uh, no, it's just, I, I brought this to committee in, uh, February. So just to say, we, we thanks very much to officers for what I think is a really quite a positive, uh, report. Uh, there were residents certainly asking me about, you know, can the council do something about this? And I think the point that we've made is, is that it's actually the, the manufacturers that are taking this forwards. But I'm keen to see that the council are going to be involved with that and also that the council are going to advertise, um, you know, how, how you can take part in it. And that consideration has been given to maybe having drop-off points at the recycling centres. So it's, it's just all, you know, I think there's nothing not to like there. I think we're all in favour of recycling. So just thanks very much to officers.
Thank you very much, um, Bailey Duncan. I'm sure that will be passed on. My question is. My question was what actually happens to the recycled ones, but I'll get an email response to that, no doubt. Okay, so if people are happy to note that, we can move to the final report for this evening from Neighbourhood Services. Um, Veronica, would you like to introduce the item?
Yes, item five, tenders received by the head of design and property. This report is here for your approval.
So there are a total of three tenders, um, detailed in this report. Um, I'm happy to take any questions on any of them, but the report is basically recommending that we approve the first one. Um, which is for improvements to rear gardens in communal areas at Alverston Terrace and Kendall Avenue from the housing revenue account and to award the tender to Dundee Plant. Um, the second one is to award a negotiated contract to Tayside Contracts for resurfacing and drainage improvements at Ladywell Avenue. And the third one is to award a negotiated contract to Tayside Contracts for the replacement of the biodist treatment plant and septic tank at Valmure Wood Travelling Person's site. So there are three tenders, um, if we open it up for questions. I think it's councillor Rome. Oh, sorry, councillor Rome, would you like to come in?
Uh, thank you, Convenor. Uh, this is the second time I've asked about declarations in a meeting today, but I just thought I'd raise that like my colleagues on the board of Tayside Contracts as the deputy convener. Now, it's a non-reminorated post, but I just thought I'd highlight this since to the tenders involved Tayside Contracts.
Um, I have a comment, a request from councillor Cookshank.
Thank you, Convenor. I'm pleased to see that there will be some improvements to footways and drainage on the Ladywell Avenue uh, in the Maryfield Ward. And I'm sure my constituents will be delighted by the news as well. I've had reports from residents in their eighties bending down to uproot weeds which grow between the slabs. So replacing these with more conventional surface material should make a positive difference. Can the council provide an indication as to when they'd expect these works to be carried out and completed? And secondly, if I may elaborate on this a little further, it's clear that the residents in Ladywell Avenue feel their area has been let down over the years. Their homes are cold because apparently they're not eligible for the modern installation. The hall and is cracked and peeling on many of the buildings, uh, and the area generally looks and feels rundown. I've already extended an invitation to Tony Boyle and his team for an environmental walk around uh, to look at issues with things like the overgrown weeds, et cetera. But I'd also appreciate some support from other relevant officers and neighbourhood services to address some of these wider issues. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Cookshank. So the first question was in relation to timescale. Is that Mr Boyle who would respond to that or would that be Michelle?
It would be City Development, Convenor, should respond to the timescales.
Sorry. Sorry, apologies. I didn't hear that.
Convenor, Neil Martin will help with that issue.
Neil Martin, okay, sorry, I couldn't see him on the screen. If Neil Martin can respond to the questions for councillor Cookshanks.
Thanks, Convenor. Uh, thanks councillor Cookshank for the question. So in terms of the programme, I'll, uh, take, uh, that back and liaise with the council officers who will be running the project with Tayside Contracts. They'll be in the mobilisation and procurement process at the minute. And, uh, once they've got dates clarified, I'll, uh, get those issued to yourselves. And I can issue, I'll get them issued to all the world councillors.
Councillor Cuckshank, do you have a supplementary?
Uh, no, thanks for that. And, uh, my second question, I'll, uh, use with, uh, Elaine's department. Um, to see if I can get someone to come and do a walk around the area. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Just come in quickly and just my apologies to councillor Cuckshank. I've just come back today. I will arrange that meeting. Apologies for not getting back soon.
Okay, thank you. Um, the next question is from councillor Coleman or a comment?
Uh, thank you, Chair, much appreciated. I just want to, um, say I'm very much welcome. Appendix one, the Alverston, uh, terrace improvements, particularly the, uh, you know, the communal areas and the shattered housing in Kendall Avenue. I've had a number of complaints and concerns raised from constituents in the area who have described it to me, the place being left to rack and ruin. So very much as a welcome development and I look forward to seeing the, the footways and landscaping in particular. Some of the weeds are the height of me and I'm six foot two. So, so very much, yeah, looking forward to things being fixed up there. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Coleman. Um, I know that councillor, um, Roberts, Bailey Roberts has also made a declaration of interest, but Veronica has a note of that. So I think the next question is from Bailey Keenan.
So it's just a comment as well, uh, similar to Daniel's. I'm obviously pleased at Alverston and I'm, I'm sure that other world colleagues will be exactly the same. Uh, I'm hoping that the access gate is, is more of a deterrent, uh, stopping the access, uh, for some people as opposed to being a, an access, uh, access gate for residents. Uh, given that, uh, you know, the young people have been about nuisance in that area at times. And I hope that, uh, these gates manage to block that off and, uh, buy the, the residents there about peace and quiet. So I look forward to the improvements.
Thank you, Bailey Keenan. I can't see any more questions in the chat. So, uh, is everyone happy to approve the acceptance of these three tenders? Thank you. I see no dissent. So I think that is us at the end of our business for neighbourhood services. And I will hand over, um, to the next committee. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kevina. The final committee this evening is the Policy and Resources Committee.
Good evening, colleagues. Before we get stuck into the substantive items that we've got before us, can I suggest that we take uh, on a purely selfish basis, a five-minute recess, uh, comfort break, if you will, and we'll reconvene at seven thirty-eight, given that we've been going for two and a half hours. Any dissension? I see none. Good. Okay. We'll see you in about five minutes. Thanks, everyone. Okay, folks, hopefully that was, uh, welcome. Um, we'll just get on with the business. So Willie, I will hand over to you.
Yeah, thanks very much, Kevina. Firstly, are there any declarations of interest? Okay, there being no declarations then it takes you on to item two, the cost of living emergency. And this item has been placed on the agenda, the request of councillor Coleman, who will request that the committee declares a cost of living emergency in Dundee with proposed actions to address this.
Councillor Coleman, I will hand over to you. And if you're happy for committee services to do so at the same time, I'll ask for your, uh, motion to be circulated as well.
Yes, thank you, Mr Kevina. I have a motion and we're most grateful if it was indeed circulated. Thank you.
Thanks very much. And if you want to speak to that effect now, I'll hand the floor to you.
Thank you, Mr Kevina. Um, I brought this motion before committee as I'm really concerned about the crisis facing many Dundee households as food, fuel and energy bills go through the roof. Given that many folk in Dundee are already struggling financially, the situation is now very serious indeed. I'm sure that all councillors will also be hearing from many constituents about this issue, a real concern for so many families in Dundee. I'm calling on the council to be the first in Scotland to declare a cost of living emergency, given the severe pressure on household budgets caused by raising, raising processes and energy costs in Dundee. Two councils in England, Eastbourne Borough Council and Mende District Council, have already declared such an emergency and it is likely many other councils right across the UK will now follow. The motion highlights the seriousness of the situation for so many folk in Dundee. On the first of April, Ofgem raised the energy price cap by fifty-four percent. In light of that, the average standard, standard tariff energy bill will increase by six hundred and ninety-three pounds a year. And the average prepaid meter will increase by seven hundred and eight pounds a year. There are further concerns about the prospects for a further energy price cap rise for October later this year, when the cap could raise from a one thousand nine hundred and seventy-one to around two, two thousand eight hundred pounds. On the sixth of April this year, the United Kingdom government increased national insurance by one point two percentage, one point two five percentage points, I beg your pardon, which is projected to cost the average Dundee family an additional hundred and eight pounds a year. The UK government also suspended the pensions triple lock for two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three, meaning that Dundee's pensioners saw a punctual rise of three point one percent this year instead of eight point three percent under the triple lock formula. This year, this will cost a Dundee pensioner on the full new state pension an average of four hundred and eighty-seven pounds and a Dondonian on the full basic state pension an average of three hundred and seventy-three pounds. Figures released by the Trussell Trust show that twelve thousand seven hundred and fifty-one food parcels were delivered into people in Dundee in two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two. And indeed, the latest average price of fuel today UK-wide, according to the RAC figures, was one pound eighty-five per litre for petrol and one pound nine, ninety per litre for diesel. This not only sees the average family fuel bill at the pump up towards an o- often over now a hundred pounds, but sees prices for essentials like food and bus services go up as well. The costs of these, the cost to these businesses is inevitably passed to already strained family budgets. The point of declaring such an emergency is not just to highlight the seriousness of the situation, but I'm asking that the chief executive write to the appropriate government ministers, the Chancellor of the Exchequer and the Secretary of State for working pensions, making clear the council's view that the UK government should immediately reduce the standard rate of VAT from twenty percent to seventeen point five percent for one year, saving the stand, the average Dundee household a further six hundred pounds this year. I'm also calling for the Westminster government to immediately reintroduce the pension, pensions triple lock to support Dundee's pensioners, applying the triple lock formula retrospectively from the start of the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three financial year and backdating the payments accordingly. As the motion indicates, although the Chancellor has finally imposed a tax on extraordinary profits from the North Sea oil and gas industry, this comes very late in the day, it also fails to address all the actions that require to be taken to help the poorest families in Dundee and across the country from the effects of energy cost increases and the cost of crisis more generally. Reducing VAT and immediately reintroducing the pension triple lock are vital steps to properly help the people in the city. This isn't just an issue for the lowest paid, it affects the squeezed middle just as much. We are now living in a country where a few at the top do well, but everybody else is seriously struggling. It is vital that the council highlights the situation and calls on the government to take action to help households. I hope that the committee will support this motion and the action it proposes. And thank you for the floor, Mr Kevina.
Thanks very much, councillor Coleman. I think very well articulated and very thorough, uh, motion as well. And I can see that your colleague is looking to sicken you, but if I can just offer some immediate comment and response to, uh, your motion as the convener. Um, I certainly support everything that's contained within that. I think we are all across the chamber very concerned about the current living, uh, situation for many of the people that live in the city. And of course, uh, the current issue only exacerbates already existing levels of poverty and deprivation. And I think it's really important to reiterate that point, that this is a cumulative effect uh, upon those that are often already dealing with really difficult situations. I think the other thing, uh, to just again emphasise, as you've rightly done, is the various elements to this cost of living crisis, the energy bills going up by an average of seven hundred pounds, food prices going up by an average of two hundred pounds, the pension, uh, the pension triple lock. I think the average there is five hundred and twenty. The universal credit cut was one thousand and forty pounds on average. The cost of Brexit is two hundred and forty quid, uh, on average for, uh, a family in the UK. So all of these have a detrimental impact upon people in this city and far beyond that. And so, uh, I certainly endorse what you're saying. I think it's also impo- important, I suppose, just to, uh, articulate the point from a council perspective that within the confines of what we've got available, and again, on a cross-party basis, we have put in some significant sums of funding to mitigate some of that impact. And of course, there is much more, uh, that is required. So just recently, just before the election, there was the eight hundred thousand pounds for the third iteration of the Fuel Well Scheme. There was the four hundred thousand pounds or approximately ten thousand pounds per week, which is supporting, uh, food organisations, food bank in the city, uh, plus extra money for food, uh, sorry, for energy advice and money advice services, uh, and an allocation of funding that will be, uh, kept for, uh, that increased demand so that we can deploy it as appropriate. And all of that, let's be frank, will not touch the sides or the scale of this challenge. Um, and, um, it is a sticking plaster on a much, much deeper, uh, and much more acute crisis that is facing people in this city. So again, welcome what you've said, the UK government did have to be dragged, I think it's fair to say, or strong-armed to give that minimal support in terms of looking at, uh, you know, transferring from a, uh, two hundred pound loan that people had to pay back to a grant. And even then, uh, I think there are still questions to be asked. So we all have to play our part, I think, across this political chamber. We've certainly played an active part and I hope that that continues, uh, cross-party. But, uh, with all of that said, and, uh, again endorsing your motion, I'll come to your colleague, councillor Creighton.
Uh, thank you, convener. Um, I was just second, councillor Coleman. I would like to specifically highlight the need for more houses in Dundee to be energy efficient, which helps with fuel bills and makes homes warmer. Dundee City Council, I think we all would agree, has made good progress with insulating its housing stock. And the external wall insulation programme has had a real success. Clearly there's a way to go. Um, on that, I would specifically mention the need to urgently progress internal insulation measures for those council houses that we cannot, uh, get external wall insulation. Uh, for example, in the old, my own West End ward, I'd highlight the Logie scheme in that respect. However, no matter how well the council does in improving the insulation of its own stock, it owns around two thousand five hundred of the seventy-one thousand homes in Dundee and many privately rented and unoccupied homes need better insulation. Therefore, this motion also calls on Scottish government to be doing more to promote the Warmer Homes Scotland initiative through grants available for cavity wall and loft insulation and new windows. Scottish government figures suggest that over six hundred and ten hundred thousand Scottish homes are living in fuel poverty, with over three hundred and ten thousand being extreme fuel poverty. The number of households benefit, benefiting from the Warmer Homes Scotland initiative has been really, really, really low. The motion highlights the Scottish government statistics showing that just five thousand two hundred and twenty-six households benefited in sixteen, seventeen and only two thousand nine hundred and four in twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one. It is vital that more households in Dundee are given help to make their homes better insulated, to help with energy costs and keep homes warmer. In seconding councillor Coleman, I hope that the committee will agree to support this motion to declare a cost of living emergency and actions we want the chief executive to take to highlight to ministers, actions we believe government should be taking. Thank you, convener.
Thanks very much for your comments. Uh, I can see there's a few, uh, comments to come and, uh, I can see that Bailey Scott has emotion as well. So I'll come to that in a moment, but councillor Short next.
Thank you, convener. Um, three words, dignity, fairness and respect. Those are the tenants of the building which, uh, sits across from the V and A. And we are a city of design and, uh, in design, there is this, an expression which is known as lift and shift. The lift and shift actually came from one of our Scandinavian sisters. And that Scandinavian sister, Lift and Shift, has brought in now a new way of dealing with, um, welfare within this country. Scotland constantly is mitigating, uh, the, the outrageous, um, cruelty that has come in the form of the welfare state from the Westminster government. Um, just this week, it was reported that four thousand three hundred and twenty-five children in Dundee have been supported to the tune of one point nine million pounds since February of twenty twenty-one. Now, this is good news for that child in Dundee, but it's a completely different story for that child in Dudley. We shouldn't accept this for people of Scotland, but it shouldn't be acceptable for anybody on these aisles. But thank goodness, we do have a Scottish government who is here supporting. But at the moment, we only have as many levers as we have. And you, nobody will be surprised to hear that, um, I'm right behind and will continue to be behind our move to independence so that we have all the levers and those words of dignity, fairness and respect. And roll your eyes all you like, then we'll make a difference to this city and this country.
Thanks very much, councillor Short. I think it is really important to see, um, looking at the mitigation that is in place. I believe it's one point six billion across the whole of Scotland, which is just, um, huge. If you consider that in the context of overall budgets and that support has been deployed across, uh, a few different areas. Discussion of housing payments, for example, the child welfare payment, which of course was, uh, doubled. All of these are really important parts of the equation. I think Scottish government have done a significant amount. And obviously, uh, the funding that I mentioned stemmed from, uh, Covid funding, uh, which was provided via Scottish government as well. So I think it's really important to reiterate that point that we are playing a significant role in making sure that we promote, push uh, and deliver results for people in the communities as well. Um, Bailey Scott, I'll come to your amendment. Um, if you're happy again for that to be circulated while you're talking to it. Thanks.
Yeah, yeah. I, I don't like disagree with a lot of the stuff that's included in that, um, uh, motion, Kevina, because why would I, as a Dundee council, not do my very best to do as much as I can to support the residents of Dundee? I don't necessarily agree with some of the, the wording in it. But, um, when I became aware that a motion was going to be coming forward, I assumed it would be similar to the one, the other Liberal Democratic, um, control councils have ruled, um, in, in recent weeks, uh, about it. And what seemed to be lacking from there is what the authority can do to, um, help people. This is full of what the government ought to be doing to help, um, people. But it's a wish list. It's asking the government to, to, to do things, um, that we have no control over and they may or may not be able to afford to do. And I have to point out that, uh, last week, the, the chancellor announced additional support measures that bring the cost of, of support to residents to thirty-seven billion across the whole of the, the UK. And some of the, um, most vulnerable households will be getting up one thousand six hundred and fifty pounds, um, in, in support. So while I'm quite happy to declare, um, uh, a, a cost of living emergency, because yes, it is a thing that is causing, causing the greatest concern to all our residents at the moment. But I really feel that what could be something put in place that allows the council to focus in on what the council is able to do and to make sure that we're putting in all the measures at our disposal to, um, support residents and, and come up with, um, any proposals we might have that we can facilitate. The council can, um, put in, put in place of a further support. So I would ask that, that the council consider setting up a, um, a short line working group to look at all the means at the disposable, at the, at the disposal of the council and what other steps the council can take to support residents during this difficult period.
Thanks, Bailey Scott. Um, if I can maybe come back initially just on, on your comments. I think I am not minded to disagree with the substance of what you're saying. My one issue is we actually have a grouping whose focus is to look at those cross-city issues. So we have a fairness leadership panel, which we created solely to look at the issues of poverty. Now, that's co-chaired by myself and a member of the public with lived experience, Tony Gibson. And it reflects the makeup of the entire city from organisations and individuals. And I suppose my concern is in setting up another group whose focus is to look at something similar. We are diluting, uh, the work of the fairness leadership group. So my suggestion is, if you are willing to accept this, is that perhaps there's an ability to have uh, a wider meeting where the, the leadership group can meet with, uh, cross-party representation to give an update on their work across city and to continue that conversation. Because I just think another group, which is already focused on some things that we have already created, just confuses the situation ever in, you know, slightly further, if that makes sense. So, uh, if you are willing to accept that as a compromise position, given that we do have the, an entity whose prime focus is poverty in the city, then I, you know, I'd ask officers to take that off table and, and take that forward.
I would do agree to that, Kevina. I have no input into that, um, currently. So yes, that could be a matter to, to all the appropriate set.
Perfect. Thank you very much. So on that basis, we'll, um, with your agreement, your, uh, amendment is withdrawn at this point and we'll pick up that point about that broader engagement with the leadership group. Um, so thank you very much. I will come to Bailey Keenan next.
And Kevina, I'm pleased that we would appear to be heading in the direction of a unanimous, uh, decision of council to back the motion that's put forward. Uh, I mean, I would probably like to see us make another representation to the Scottish government, but as well, because I don't see that, uh, and I'm not going to divide on it, I'd leave it that we should. But, uh, I'm not looking to amend that motion any further. Uh, but we're really reading, taking into account there is limited resource that council can put towards things. And there is. And there is decisions of bigger governments that need to step up to the mark and deliver some of the things that will make a difference to people's cost of living that exists at the moment. Electricity prices going up by a cricket score is a real fear and hence the reason that I backed the motion the last time to leave off some of the money in reserves so as that we knew best how people were needing support. So you know, I think that we, in that working group that's suggested by Bailey Scott, I think we need to take into account of what levers that we can move around in council. Now, if we weren't spending £4.5 million replacing roofs, we could have done a considerable amount of the insulation work that is looking there. We could have been putting an energy energy efficient solar panels up or wind turbines up within our parks so that we'd be producing electricity. We've got to try to get something that is a bit longer term for people so as that we can support them. So when we're making investments within the city, we're making them for the the best reasons that support people and make sure that their energy bills or their household bills are not going up. So, you know, with that, I'm happy to support the motion.
Thanks for your comments. Bailey Keenan, like you, could have amended this, but I think in the with the focus of kind of cross-party support, makes sense to focus on the substantive issue that we're all rallying behind. And I was also saying that we could equally point to £14 million of annual cost of PPV from the last Labour-led administration, but let's not make those kind of points at this juncture. So we'll come on to the next comment, which I believe is Bailey McPherson. Fraser.
Thanks indeed, convener. Indeed, let's not make party points tonight. The fundamental point is the seriousness of the situation for so many Dundee families. And so I'm grateful to my colleagues, councillors Coleman and Crichton for bringing this forward tonight. And I agree with your point regarding the leadership group. And I would also make the point locally, the very good work our welfare rights team does in terms of supporting families get all the benefits that they are entitled to. I commend the work that they do. I wanted to actually just add a little bit to the point about Warmer Homes Scotland initiative. Because today I had a very useful conversation with the Public Affairs and Communications Manager for Warrenworks, who are the delivery partner for Warmer Homes, the Warmer Homes Scotland initiative. And what he was saying to me was that they're making progress in getting back to their pre-pandemic level of delivery. Because you can imagine that in terms of fitting insulation and such like, and this is really for private rented and when they're occupied houses rather than our own. Obviously, the pandemic had a significant impact on that. But even then, and I think councillor Crichton emphasised this point, the numbers that Warmer Homes has been able to actually, a number of households that it has been able to assist is, well, back in 2016, 17, it was 5,326, from what I understand, from the conversation I had with Warrenworks. It's getting back to that sort of level, five, six thousand a year. Bearing in mind that we're talking about over 600,000 people in households in Scotland that are in fuel poverty, you can see it slightly doesn't touch the sides. Now, I fully accept it excludes public sector housing, but the point really is that what I'd be really keen to see, and I'm not making a party political point in any way, it's just a serious point that I would really hope the chief executive can get across in a letter to Scottish ministers. And that is, I think that whilst the criteria for Warmer Homes Scotland is spot on in relation to the house criteria, the house-related things, what energy rating and such like, that's spot on, no problem with that at all. It's the income-related criteria that really has to be widened if you're ever going to increase the number of people that actually qualify for it. And it's quite tight, it's, you know, it's around passported benefits and such like. So, you know, that's one thing I would really like to see in relation to making homes non-council housing, if you like, as energy efficient as possible. But having said that, I'm very grateful for the show of unity I think we've seen tonight across the virtual chamber. And very grateful to colleagues for that. Thank you, convener.
Thanks very much Bailey McPherson, and thanks for your words there. I think one other thing that I will follow up with officers in the aftermath of the meeting is I'm very conscious that we have a number of new members. I think providing some additional context on the actions that have already been deployed would be very helpful. So we've got two particularly recent reports, one from the 25th of April on the Covid support, the £800,000 to fuel well, the £400,000 to food support that I referenced earlier. And also a report from the 7th of March, which was entitled Customer Service and IT Frontline Service Update, which provided a breakdown and some key statistics around the issues that the city is facing. Now, of course, that's slightly out of date to the cost of living crisis, but nonetheless, it provides a little bit of context that I think will be helpful. And I'll ask that they are circulated via email after the meeting. With that said, I'll come to my colleague councillor Flynn.
Yeah, thanks convener. I think I won't disagree with much of what you've said there, because I think you're actually highlighting a number of things we're doing within the city already. And I think we have actually recognised the cost of living crisis imposed on us by the Westminster government in many ways. Because if you actually look down to what they have done, the Westminster government, many colours have failed to have a food security strategy. They've failed to have an effective energy policy. Yes, there's been a lot of other mitigating factors, but without these policies in place, which are strategically welcomed and required, we will always be at the bequest of small changes where you can't amend or do anything with this. But I think you've touched on what the Scottish government have done, convener. I think we really need to maybe highlight some of the things the Scottish government have actually done so far. Apart from, I think you've made quite a substantial amount of money, you noted earlier. But let's look at this. He invested £10 million to continue the Fuel Security Fund. They've uprated Scottish benefits by 6%. They've invested £41 million in 2022, 23 for Scottish Welfare Fund. Invested £130 million in tackling child poverty this year alone. They're making great stresses to mitigate all the problems that seem to be caused by the Westminster government. And I think, convener, we could write to the Scottish government, they've got a budget they have to work to, again, constrained by UK government. And I think it's one of these arguments where we know what's the best way to go. Independence for me is the right way to go. We can make choices for our own people and our own choices. Usually better than the ones being made by Westminster government, which I remind everybody what they did to Universal Credit. And I think that's just an example of their attitude to people in general. So thanks convener. I'll support this motion as it is, convener. But I think we have to know seriously what the Scottish government are having to do to mitigate what the Westminster government are doing to the people of Scotland.
Thanks very much, Mark. All very well made points and certainly added to the comment that I made earlier as well. So thank you very much for those. I think that is the last contribution. So with all of that, I don't think there's any, oh, sorry, councillor Tolland.
Sorry, just very quickly following on from Mark's point and actually following on from the Westminster point as well. Other European countries reduced the cap. The cap went to 54%, but other countries like Spain and Portugal stopped that cap from happening. So we could have prevented this. We could have prevented this from the very start. And instead of mitigating it, we could have prevented this kind of energy crisis that happened. So just want, I think it's important to make that point that we're spending a lot of time talking about mitigation, but actually had Westminster, as Mark said, had an energy policy and actually a credible and humane policy, then we wouldn't be having this conversation in the first place.
Thanks very much councillor Tolland. Again, it goes back to those words that councillor Lynne mentioned. Not councillor Lynne, councillor Short, Lynne Short, in terms of dignity and respect. So absolutely agree with those points. With all of that, I see no other contributions. Oh, councillor Shears, right, I'll make this the last contribution and then we'll move on to the next item. Councillor Shears.
Thank you. And I'll keep it quite quick. There is a lot of talk about what the Scottish government has done. We also need to mention what they haven't done. It was SNP policy for a nationalised energy company, which would have prevented this. They then dropped it. So we need to recognise that the Scottish government are complicit in this cost of living crisis as well.
Thank you councillor Shears. I don't think it would have prevented the cost of living crisis. I think that's probably a slight overreach. But again, I think there has been work even at local level in terms of discussions around that. But energy policy, as you know, is not an issue that is devolved to Hollywood and there are broader structural issues, I think, that we need to talk about when we consider the energy policy of the UK and the current crisis that we all face. But let's finish on a positive note and we are all unanimous in our focus, I think, on cost of living crisis, the impact on our communities and the work that we want to do to support individuals. So I'll come back just very briefly to councillor Coleman for any summing up that he wants to do and then I'll conclude the item with that.
Thank you, Mr. Convener. I'd just like to thank everybody for their contributions and I commend the motion to the chamber.
Thanks very much. So I take it this item as agreed. Thank you very much. Thanks everyone for your contributions. We shall move on. Willie.
Yeah, thanks very much, convener. Let's take you on to item three, local government benchmarking framework performance indicators. Now, I'd just like to check, is it councillor Finnegan's intention that she wished to make a declaration of interest to this particular item?
She has intimated councillor Finnegan.
Hi, yeah, sorry, just to make note that I'm an employee of NHS T side and I work within Dundee Health and Social Care Partnership.
Thanks very much, Jacks. Appreciate that.
Okay.
Okay, Willie.
Yeah, thanks very much. Sure. Item three then, before his local government benchmarking framework performance indicators report, the heuristic recommendations.
Yep, this is a standard update report that comes forward to committee on a regular basis. So this is about the performance from 2020 to 2021. Clearly in the midst of the pandemic, the indicators are across a broad suite of council services. I'm sure there'll be a number of questions on particular aspects contained within this. The report shows the council has achieved an overall performance rate of 48% in the top half, which is slightly up from the previous year of 47%. But we should always aim to be significantly higher than that and absolutely not settle for anything less. So the focus is on continuous improvement. It's about looking across each of these service areas to make sure that we drive the agenda forward in terms of delivering for citizens within the confines of the budgets that we have at the present time. The report is going to go to scrutiny committee for further consideration as well. So members of the scrutiny committee will have the opportunity to go into greater depth at that point, if there is anything in particular they wanted to focus on. But at this point, I will just open up for questions. Bailey Keenan. Kevin, sorry, you went on mute.
Thank you. I just, I've probably asked similar questions on this report previously. And when I've asked about the number of readmissions to hospital, you know, I get I get told that ours isn't anything like the figures that we're seeing. We're seeing 150, 1.6 as opposed to the benchmark of 1.16, which suggests to me that we've got a considerable amount more people going back into hospital quicker or within that 28 days and wondering why the reason that is. Often when I've asked the question, I've been told that that isn't a true reflection of where we are in Health and Social Care Partnership. And I know these things are quite dated, but perhaps it would be useful to to have had the benchmark and one that would show our position last year to see that there is that definite improvement. And if I can ask another question around the areas of multiple deprivation and some of the issues that we'll have in attainment, given that we've we're going to see a huge cut within the attainment challenge fund that, you know, this year took 22 posts from education. And if that's likely, the same will see again over the next four years, a similar level of cut. So how do we intend to see that gap being closed while we see that amount of money being taken away?
Thanks for your questions. Bailey Keenan, on the first one, I will come to Diane McCulloch, who I believe is on the call. Diane, can I come to you for a fuller explanation? If there's any further information that is needing to be sent post-meeting, then I'm sure you'd be happy to provide that. But Diane.
Yes, thank you, Bailey Keenan. It is very complicated in terms of how each local, each health board actually registers and records information in regards to admissions and discharges to hospital. So for some time, we've had a way of recording in T side, which means that we tend to show higher than in the information that others might. What I'm happy to do though, Bailey Keenan, is to come back to you with some further and more detailed information that will actually provide the explanation to that.
Can I maybe ask why we've continued to quote higher then if you're not afforded to be benchmarked? Why are we not getting that benchmark so as it's much closer to being a representation of the fact or otherwise? So.
It's partially to do with, and I don't have the detail behind the figure which is in the paper, Bailey Keenan, but it's partly to do with the way we receive patients into the hospital. So we have acute receiving units, et cetera, coming through. So sometimes it's about the ways in which they come in. But in regards to the readmission, I will, I will ask if I can come back to you with a bit more information because I don't have the detail in front of me that gives us the breakdown and the comparators to the other areas. My apologies.
Convener, you are on mute.
Thank you very much. I was on a roll there as well, Bailey Keenan, but thank you very much. I was just saying thanks to Diane for that. And if that information can be circulated afterwards, that'd be appreciated. On your second question, which was in relation to attainment, obviously there was recent reports related to attainment in the city, which also detailed some of the efforts underway across all of our schools to really target resources and target capacity within our teaching staff to drive home with attainment. And within this report, you do see that in some aspects of attainment, there have been some significant improvements forward. And I'm sure Audrey will touch upon them. But Audrey, if you want to come in on the specifics of Bailey Keenan's question for me, please.
Yeah, thank you, convener. And thanks Bailey Keenan for the question. So yeah, you have on page six, the the benchmark against our family grouping. And of course, that's a mixed picture. So we know there are areas we still need to to drive improvement, absolutely. And we're on that case. But also, you know, some context around that. We all know that we can look at data and statistics in many different ways. And I think important to acknowledge that, you know, for the context of Dundee, where some of these measures in the local government benchmarking framework are based on S6 lever data, based on the number of young people who were in the fourth year at the time. And you'll know from our excellent college partnership with Dundee and Angus College that we have a significant number of young people who leave our school system S4 and 5 and move into a career or a vocational pathway through college courses because of the excellent partnership working there. So that does skew things slightly. But as you've already said, convener, if you look at even page three on the same report, you'll see our tariff scores continuing to improve over the years and certainly closing the gaps between SMD and quintile one and quintile five. So for literacy and numeracy, which of course was the targeted areas of the attainment challenge and the tariff scores continue to improve year on year. And also that's reflected in the diversion that we've taken into the senior phase and introduced, you know, multiply tenfold over the last few years, for example, foundation apprenticeships, as opposed to young people going for, you know, traditional firefires and so on, as it seems to meet their needs. You also will see that we have got significant improvement in our attainment in primary and we hope to see that feeding through into into secondary in the years to come. Excellent inspection reports before lockdown, of course, in early years and in primary, huge improvements there in terms of that. So the different ways that we measure ourselves against ourselves, against a benchmark and against a standard through HMI. So an improving picture in many aspects, but still work to do. And certainly we are focused on that. We did bring to committee earlier the first cut, if you like, in the attainment challenge of 1.23 million this year. And we did say that we would bring further reports, convener, to show how we plan to manage that over the forthcoming years. So that we will, and we've all expressed our concern around that, that we will go from 6.2 million down to 1.3 by the end of this period of time. But we have plans to manage that and we'll bring that as a report early in the next session.
Thanks Audrey. And again, there'll be constant information that flows through Children's Families Committee in terms of updates on that, which will be helpful. And of course, post-recess, we'll be considering a new city plan and part of that will be focused on attainment, of course. And there'll be an opportunity for members to scrutinise through that as well. So Bailey McPherson, I'll have you next.
Thanks, convener. My point really is around the statistics under neighbourhood services in relation to the percentage of total household waste arising that is recycled. And I think it just doesn't, you know, it's an area for improvement. I'm sure we would all agree. There are ambitious targets being set by government. And we have a bit of a way to go in relation to achieving these and sustaining these long term. to go in relation to achieving these and sustaining these long term. I'm not really wanting to put officers on the spot tonight. I'm very conscious with this particular report that it covers the whole breadth of everything that we do. And, you know, plucking something out of the air and getting an officer to give you a detailed response, I'm not quite sure is the most helpful way of approaching it. And I think what I was going to ask actually, and you alluded to it, this report goes to scrutiny committee. Could I maybe just ask that officers from within neighbourhood services perhaps are, are ready to give a more comprehensive update on the strategy in relation to improving our recycling rate in relation to household waste, you know, paper, card, plastic, tins, et cetera, et cetera, recycling going forward. Because I think that might be a very useful forum in which we could discuss the matter more, more widely.
Thanks, Bailey McPherson. I'm sure I speak for officers when I say they greatly appreciate the heads up on the issues that you would like to discuss at scrutiny. And again, just to, I suppose, we emphasise standing orders, which does encourage people to ask those questions in advance to provide the details. So I really appreciate that. And I know that Tony, given that he's not feeling 100%, will greatly appreciate not having to answer a question at this stage. So we'll pick that up, as you say, at the scrutiny committee itself. Thanks very much. Councillor Shears next, I have you.
Thank you. So I'd like to bring attention to the measure on page six, which is percentage of adults satisfied with local schools. That's now 24% below the benchmark. And the data is two years old. But before the data revision due in July, there was a major change to Dundee schools, which has been announced. And the move to faculties, which 97% of teachers have rejected, 98 believe won't attend, won't improve the attainment gap, and is leading to unprecedented industrial action in response. There's also a petition going around with 700 signatures, which is filled with comments from parents against the change. All this while the percentage of our most deprived children obtaining five or more awards at level five and six remains below the benchmark. And on that, in point, in part 6.3 in the progress report, stated policies targeting the closing, closing the attainment gap are working. So why is there such disruptive, radical and unwanted change that's been imposed in school? And is it any wonder that 42% of adults are unsatisfied with local schools when the views of parents and teachers are being disregarded like this?
Thanks for the question, councillor Shears. I would say in the first instance, that is not a question which is relevant to the report that's before us. The report before us is very clearly about the indicators and the measurements which are before us. Your question is more about the policy, which has been agreed in the council since 2019. So if that's a question that you want to pick up off table, I'm happy to do so. But it isn't specific to the report that's before us. So on that basis, I will move on. I see no other questions in that regard. So can I take this report as agreed? Thank you. Okay, councillor, sorry, Willie.
Yeah, thanks very much, convenor. Item four then, for his improving services through listening to customers and service users, he has to agree the recommendations.
Yep, this is another report which provides a significant amount of detail and information. I think it's really helpful, actually. It's the you said, we did report, which again sets out a number of improvements across services. And there's some fantastic examples within the report. It's actually quite, quite heartening when you read through just some of the work that's been undertaken that often we wouldn't hear about through the normal committee process. Things from the new beginnings team in Llanfair and Resource Centre, for example, and the work that they did during lockdown as a safe haven for pregnant women and new mothers experiencing social isolation. There are just countless examples through the report, which I think we should all be tremendously proud of in terms of their work and thank them for their efforts, not just during COVID, but all of the time. And again, it really is a particular highlight when we have this report coming forward. Because I think it showcases, as I say, the issues that don't necessarily always come to the surface when we're talking about the kind of policy and strategic conversations that we're having within the virtual chamber. Councillor McHugh.
Thank you. I found this an interesting report. And, and, and once I'd read it, I had a look at the We Listened, We Acted website that's referred to. This includes an impressive list of achievements, although some of the actions didn't actually take place over the last year. As it says on the website, you might want to have a wee refresh. I have a couple of questions relating to a major consultation. One of these opportunities to, as it says in your report, demonstrate that the council listens, learns from and acts on feedback received. I refer to the engagement exercise on the new East End Community Campus Project, describing the consultation report as an unrivalled opportunity to ensure that end users have a real sense of ownership in the completed building. I wonder then whether you did actually listen to the people's responses during this public consultation. The Holmes Miller Report lists page after page of comments and comment after comment asking why there is no swimming pool included in the brief. There are 69 of these comments in total, by far the largest grouping of any of the key points raised. So my question is, did you listen to the people of the East End and the North East? Or did you listen and just not hear?
Thanks for the question, councillor McHugh. I'm going to ask the head of legal to come in because I think we need to be very careful when there are two things. One, a live planning application. And two, all members of this committee are members of the planning process. So we need to be very careful that we're not overstepping the mark in terms of those contributions and that wider discussion and participation in planning matters. So Roger, can I defer to you and your superior knowledge on such matters, please?
Thank you, convenor. As I think all elected members will be aware from the essential induction briefing, which was given shortly after the election, the councillor's code of conduct has recently been revised. It contains advice for all councillors on what to do and what not to do if they wish to take part in the consideration of a planning application. It's clearly a matter for each's ability for the decisions they make. I think probably the most helpful thing I can say at this stage is, depending upon any questions that are asked and any answers that are given, elected members may wish to reflect when a planning application comes before the planning committee as to whether or not they are still in a position to speak and/or to vote in relation to it, depending upon their actions and their statements prior to the application being considered.
Thanks very much, Roger, for that clarification. On that basis, Dorothy, I don't think it's appropriate for me to give you a response in that, because I would not want to say anything that might well contribute or contribute to my ability not to take part in any decisions that may come forward. So on that basis, I'm going to move on.
Convenor, can an officer give, can an officer give that a response then?
Well, Bailey Keenan, Bailey Keenan, please don't interrupt. First of all, if you have a question or comment, can you make sure you're using the chat function so that we can be clear on what we're doing? And I don't think it's for you to ask on behalf of councillor McHugh. So if councillor McHugh would like an officer to ask, then I'm happy for her to suggest that. Again, I would just reiterate the point that all members should be very careful about asking questions or commenting on issues which are live planning applications. But with that, I will defer to Dorothy in the first instance, and then come to you as required. Councillor McHugh.
I'm totally confused. I would take whoever's going to give me advice here. The question I was asking was about listening to the people. That was the crux of the question and that was the, the answer I required. So I really don't know what to say here, John. Sorry, convenor. You can advise me. The question I asked was, did you listen?
Okay, thanks. On that basis, if I can just bring in perhaps Audrey May, our executive director of Children and Family Service, to offer an initial response, again, with the caveat and caution over the live nature of that. And then we'll move on thereafter. Audrey.
Thanks, thanks, convenor. And I think I would say thank you for the question, but it's, it's, it's given us a wee bit of a dilemma to discuss. So I would just want to be assuring members that absolutely we are listening. And we had a wide range of consultation, but we are still in the middle of a, a planning process. But I would want to give the assurance that we're listening to the feedback that we get from people. Yes.
Okay, thanks. Well, I'm going to move on in this item because I really just want to be quite careful about how we deal with that. But we shall take that item now as dealt with. So can I ask for agreement on that? Thank you very much. Okay, back to you, Willie.
Yeah, thank you, convenor. Takes my time. The best value assurance report, the site is for noting.
Again, a substantial report that provides an update on the best value assurance action plan that was previously brought to committee. So provide an update on progress. You're asked to note the progress set out in sections five and six of the report, which summarises those actions which have been completed since the last update. And of course, there will be further updates that come back to committee to appraise all elected members on the progress against that. There's a number of actions that have been completed, I think, are relevant to tonight in terms of looking at the strategic responses being planned to pressures around poverty, including the cost of living crisis, which we've discussed tonight, the annual governance statement, and the most effective use of some of our data and attendance policy, for example. But are there any particular questions or comments on this report? I see no desperate rush for the chat function. Okay, with that, can I take this item as agreed? Okay, thank you all very much. That's our first proper committee underway and under the belt for all of you newbies. Very much appreciate all the contributions and questions tonight as well, and have a good week. Hopefully, we'll see you soon. Take care.